I call this meeting of Township High School District 211 Board of Education to order. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Dumbrowski.
Here.
Mr. McGowan.
Here.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Here.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Here. Would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The next recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matters pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its motion or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley.
Aye.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dumbrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. I call our meeting of the Board of Education of District 211 is returned to open session. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley.
Here.
Ms. Cavill.
Aye.
Mr. Kramer.
Aye.
Mr. Dumbrowski.
Aye.
Mr. McGowan.
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom.
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Aye. Would everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And that will take us to our recognition, and we have some outstanding recognitions this evening. Dr. Small?
Thank you. Today is a special day, a day reserved for thanking those who fought for us and willingly put forth their lives on the line for the sake of our country. While this used to be a day off in schools, we now ensure our students are not only present but also learning about the holiday's significance. Across our schools today, we hosted veterans for panel discussions, breakfasts, and they spoke to our students during assemblies, and our students spent time writing thank you notes to our veterans. I would like to pause during this recognition and invite any veterans who are joining us tonight to please stand and be recognized. I would like to personally recognize two veterans who are here in part of this board meeting tonight. First, Mr. Mark Kramer, Board of Education member. Would you please stand? A naval aviator, Mr. Kramer was an aircraft commander flying an H-46 helicopter for land and sea operations, including day and night, all-weather, resupply, personnel transport, and rescue missions. He also served in significant leadership, operational, and staff assignments during his distinguished career. He has been awarded the Legion of Merit and the Meritorious Service Medal. Mr. Kramer, thank you for your service. Mr. Patrick DeGeorge, Public Relations Specialist, would you please stand? A member of the National Guard, Mr. DeGeorge enlisted as the Stinger Missile Gunner and has held multiple leadership positions throughout his career, including media relations officers in charge for Joint Task Force Guantanamo Public Affairs. He was deployed to Iraq in 2004, 2008, and 2015. He has won numerous service and combat medals. Mr. DeGeorge, thank you for your service. We thank all of our veterans, and we're forever grateful for what they've done to maintain America's freedom. We thank them for their service, their sacrifice, and their bravery. We would like to move on to two outstanding students we are recognizing tonight. First, Eric Winkowski, would you please come forward and introduce our coach and student golfer?
Dr. Small, thank you for taking, and Board of Education, thank you for taking some time to honor a truly exceptional athlete tonight. I'm going to ask the athlete that as your coach introduces you to please walk forward, receive your award, and stand next to the podium. Additionally, any family members that are here and present tonight to please stand and be recognized when your student is introduced. Helping me present tonight is Conan High School Principal Julie Novak and Athletic Director John Kane. Scott Seaplick from Conan High School. Scott has been a teaching assistant and the head golf coach at Conan High School for seven years. Scott also has experience coaching baseball, softball, and lacrosse, so he's very busy in the spring, it seems. In addition to having a state place winner this year, Scott's team also won the IHSA Regional Championship. Scott?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. My name, again, is Scott Seaplick. I've been the boys varsity golf coach at Conan for the past seven seasons, and I've been very fortunate over those seven years to coach some amazing student athletes, not just athletically impressive on the golf course, but also amazing young men. And the athlete we are recognizing tonight is no different. In fact, he has surpassed all my expectations. Not only is he overflowing with talent, he is also an unbelievable leader and ambassador to younger players on our team. He helps teammates get better, and even though golf is a very competitive sport and everyone wants to beat everyone on the team, he still gives up his own practice time to help his teammates. And then that is exactly what a great leader does. And if you don't mind, I'd like to share a couple quick achievements from Nicholas or what Nicholas did this year. He was a top-ten finisher at the Plainfield Invite this year, a top-ten finisher at the Barrington Invite, a top-ten finisher at the Lake Park Invite. He won the Wheeling Wildcat Invite, which was a big tournament with 22 teams, took first place with that. He took first place at the MSL Conference Tournament, so he was the MSL Conference Champion this year. He was All-Conference Selection. He was first place at the IHSA Regional as an individual and led our team to the Regional Championship this year. He shot a one-under 71 at the IHSA Sectionals and was an IHSA State Qualifier. With the rounds of 70 and 72, he was able to take fifth place at State this year, which, me doing my math, that's the best finish of any golfer from District 211 since 2007, so a very big deal. And then he capped off the season, I'm sure a lot of you have heard this, capped off the season by getting a hole-in-one on the 17th hole of the last round at State this year, followed by a birdie on 18, so three under the last two holes, and that propelled him to become Conan's first-ever All-State Male Golfer. And it's almost 60 years' worth of golfers at Conan. Nicholas was also our team captain and MVP at season's end. And I also want to say, too, that he has a wonderful support cast around him, not only just his teammates, friends, also his family. So I'd like to introduce, before I introduce Nicholas, Lori and Patrick Simon. So please make sure you guys keep your ears open for the coming years, and I'd like to introduce and recognize Nicholas Simon.
Mr. Grittoni, will you please come forward and introduce to us your student? Mr. Grittoni is a Fremd High School mathematics teacher.
It is an honor for me to introduce Thomas Lu to the District 211 Board of Education for scoring a 36 on the ACT. Thomas is joined this evening by his parents, Ting Lu and Sean Yu. I would like them to ask, I would like to ask them to stand and be recognized. Thank you. I have been Thomas's math team coach for the past three years. I was also his AP Computer Science Principles teacher his freshman year, and this year I am also his multi-variable calculus teacher. In addition, Thomas is a valued member of the Fremd Tennis Team, the Fremd Scholastic Bowl Team, the Fremd Science Bowl Team, and NHS. Thomas keeps busy with a lot of clubs. Over the years, I've seen Thomas do during numerous high-pressure situations that others might find stressful: math competitions, intense math team practices, and challenging quizzes. But in all of these situations, I've never seen him even get remotely stressed out. Thomas approaches everything he does in life with a smile, a keen sense of humor, and a positive attitude. Thomas brightens up any room he is in with his cheerful presence. One tradition on our math team is for our executive board members to teach math content and problem-solving skills to their fellow team members. I've had the privilege of watching Thomas teach his teammates about advanced polynomial factoring techniques, coordinate geometry, trigonometry, and more. Based on Thomas's ACT achievement, you've probably already guessed that Thomas is a brilliant problem solver and mathematician, but he also has a rare gift for teaching, engaging, and inspiring others, and all of that with a great sense of humor. Thomas has helped his teammates become better mathletes, and he's helped me become a better coach and math teacher. Thomas, I am so proud of your achievement on the ACT, and I'm also excited to hear about the many successes and achievements you will continue to earn during your time at Fremd High School and beyond. Congratulations.
Congratulations to our young men here. We do have one more person that we need to recognize this evening. And tonight marks the last Board of Education meeting for Sally Semirusty, our recording secretary. She has spent many long nights with us, and we will miss her dearly, but we wish her all the best in her retirement. Sally started at District 211 in 1997 as a teaching assistant at Conan High School. Since then, she has had many roles, including her current role as Executive Assistant to the School Board and Superintendent's Office. She's always, always has a kind word or a smile, and will always go the extra mile to get the job done. For those who don't know, she also is an exceptional editor and proofreader with journalism training. She leaves extremely big shoes to fill. Again, we thank her and wish her well in this next chapter of her life. Thank you, Sally. She's also the most humble person that I know. She is amazing. With that, we have completed our recognitions. Those who would like to leave most certainly are able to do so. I'd like to thank our young people for their determination, their resilience, and their dedication to their academics and to their athletics. Thank you. And thank you to the parents for supporting our students and for the staff that works with our students. So, again, thank you very, very much, and if you'd like to leave, because you probably have some homework to do, you're more than welcome to do so, and we will continue with our meeting. Okay. We do not have any presentations this evening.
Where are you going?
Excuse me, I jumped ahead. Public comments will be next. The Board welcomes you and is pleased to listen to your comments this evening. It's important that you know this is a public board meeting and not a dialogue, so the board members will not be responding to your comments or answering questions at this time. As a reminder, the board meeting is being taped and livestreamed. We ask that you value the procedures and decorum of our meeting and be respectful of those at the podium so they may be heard. When I call your name, please come forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Though not required, you may state if you are a resident of the district. Please limit your comments to five minutes. They will receive, you will receive a notification when you have one minute remaining. Any individual's unused time or place in order may not be deferred to another individual. If you wish a response from the superintendent, please leave your name and phone number with Mr. Teneporth, he's right at the edge there. I will call your name, I'll call two names, so the first person will come up, and then it would be the next person waiting. The first person I have on our list is Melissa Ortega, and following her is Aiden Branis.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Melissa Ortega, and I am a resident of District 211. I also have a son who's a senior at Palatine High School. I just wanted to take a moment to come up here and thank all the board members for all the hard work you do. I know it's your personal time, you have families, you know, you have a lot going on, and I just feel like school boards really right now are not appreciated enough, and I want to thank all of you for your service. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you. Aiden Branis, followed by Katie Allen.
Hello. My name is Aiden Brands. I'm a Palatine High School student, and I'm currently in my senior year. A lot of people say that they're proud to be a Palatine pirate, but unfortunately, I'm not a proud pirate. Over the past few years, I've seen countless incidents of racism and discrimination initiated by teachers. Just this week, I've seen over five students of color be accused of being in gangs because of the kind of clothes they're wearing, just because of the color of their pants, the color of their shirt, they're being accused of being in a gang, and that's wrong. But if someone like me were to wear certain colors like that, I don't think I'd be accused of being in a gang. It wouldn't be a big deal. I think I'd get away with it. Palatine High School in the past has been exposed for discriminating against the LGBTQ+ plus community in the past, so why is it a shock that they're discriminating against students of color? I ask that the school board look into this matter immediately and take this up with Principal Medina and demand they stop this discrimination. This is 2021, not 1962. We need to move forward, not backwards. And I'd also like to thank Tim and Curtis, you guys are doing, you know, great jobs, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Katie Allen, followed by Jerry Frida.
Good evening. My name is Katie Allen. I'm a resident of District 211 with two daughters at Fremd High School. Thank you for the opportunity to voice my support for our board members and the time and energy you give to our school communities. I would also like to ask that you vote no to Resolution 2, arming teachers and staff, and yes to Resolution 15, advocating for safe gun storage at the annual meeting of the Illinois State Board of Education meeting. Finally, I must encourage the board to continue fighting against anti-mask and anti-vaccine disinformation. We must stand against the tide that would choose to put our school communities in jeopardy. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Frida, followed by Lucinda Sanders.
Hi, my name is Jerry Frida. I'm a resident of the district. I was here at the October 21st meeting when you were served with a lawsuit that in part demands that our schools make masks optional, which is similar to the policy currently in place in the state of Michigan. At that last meeting, if you recall, I provided a statistical comparison that demonstrated that Michigan had a COVID positivity rate over 400% of ours, and that the leading location for transmission was, as you also may recall, schools. Now, three weeks later, in view of what our district is being sued to implement, it seems important to update those figures. On November 2nd, the COVID positivity rate in Illinois was 2.3%, while on the same date, the COVID positivity rate in Michigan was 14.6%, now over 600% of what the Illinois rate is. Also, based on a University of Michigan study, on October 15th, the Detroit Free Press reported that, quote, "COVID spread was 62% higher in school districts with no mask rules," unquote. We all want to get the COVID virus behind us, but clearly, the masks optional policy in schools is a failure and would be a huge step backwards for the safety of our community and prolong the threat to the lives of our family and friends. Yet now, because of a Volca minority that appears to be in league with far-right political operatives from outside of our area, we're compelled to spend taxpayer dollars to defend against being forced into a dangerous regression. I, and I'm sure many other residents of this district, would like to know who is really pushing this recklessness and how much it's going to cost us. As reported by the respected Springfield publication, Capital Facts, the downstate attorney Tom DeVore, who promulgated this lawsuit, and similar ones all across Illinois, in 144 other districts, in fact, charged over $5,000 per district to file the suits. All told, that's over $725,000 generated in fees. Not a bad week for a lawyer who some have described as a, quote, "grifter" and who is just coincidentally, we're supposed to believe, is running for political office as a far-right political candidate near his home in downstate Illinois. So I hope that during the discovery portion of this case, the board will urge the attorneys for District 211 to get to the bottom of where all this money came from and make it public. Also, more importantly, it's imperative that the board soon make public how much this litigation is estimated to cost all of us in the district. Again, I want to thank the board for the courage you've shown in standing up for the safety of the community and to please know that the majority of residents in the district stand with you in your rational efforts to get this threat to public safety behind us as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Lucinda Sanders, and then followed by Joyce Slavic.
Good evening. My name is Lucinda Sanders. I am a District 211 resident. I'm a teacher at D-300 up the road, and I, too, am here to thank you for staying the course, thank you for enforcing safety protocols such as the mask, wearing of masks, and to echo that it's a big sacrifice to be in education these days. Teachers are tired, the students are stressed, it's a sacrifice to be a board member. You might get yelled at, you might get threatened, so I thank you for your service, and I encourage you that history is on your side. When we get through this, and we will get through all of this, then we'll be able to say that we protected our grandparents, the grandmas, the grandpas, we protected our immunocompromised students. So I echo all the thank yous that you've received this evening, and also thank you for please not arming teachers. My goodness. Thank you.
Next up is Joyce Slavic, followed by Laura. It could be Davis or DeVos, I'm not exactly certain. And just a reminder, masks need to be worn in our area here, so if it's slipping down, I'm going to ask that you please put your masks back up. I need to have the masks on, ma'am. Could you please put it on? Thank you. Joyce?
Hi, my name is Joyce Slavic. I'm a parent in the district, and I also want to thank the board for their hard work for keeping our students and staff safe during these last two difficult years. It is greatly appreciated, your efforts. I'm here tonight to speak about the IASB gun-related resolutions that will be voted on at the November convention. I ask that the board vote no on IASB Resolution 2, to arm any teachers and any staff, and devote yes on Resolution 15, to advocate for safe gun storage in homes with kids. Resolution 2 is labeled the Student Safety and Protection Plan but is anything but safe. Arming teachers and staff increases the risks of accidents and negligent use of firearms as more adults in schools are armed. The Associated Press reported that there were more than 30 incidents between 2014 and 2018 that involved a firearm brought to a school by a law enforcement officer or that involved a teacher improperly discharging or losing control of a weapon. In an NYPD study from 1998 through 2006, it was determined that even trained police officers successfully hit their intended targets in just 18% of incidents involving an exchange of gunfire. It is simply unrealistic that teachers can be expected to effectively return fire without inadvertently injuring the children they mean to protect. The Journal of Adolescent Health did a study across rural and suburban areas and discovered there was no evidence that the presence of resource officers in schools lessened the severity of school shooting incidents. Note that even though this push is coming from downstate, there is no reason to think that there won't be local districts near us that adopt this dangerous practice. That means our own students could be at risk for gun death or injury if they go to an armed district for a sports event, a debate, or a music contest. And students will access teachers' guns. There are multiple incidents where guns were stolen from teachers by students, or cases where guns were misplaced and later found in the hands of students. Please vote no for Resolution 2, to arm teachers. Resolution 15 is called Child Safe Gun Storage and makes homes with guns safer for children. Current safe storage only applies if there are children younger than 15. This law would require safe storage if there are children younger than 18 years old in the home. This does not require school districts to enforce the law, but merely to support it. Approximately 80% of guns used in school shootings by shooters under 18 were taken from home or homes of friends and relatives. 25% of gun owners report storing their guns in unlocked locations, and 4.6 million minors live in homes with loaded unlocked firearms. Children are impulsive, and giving them the means to harm themselves or others in the community is not acceptable, when adults can easily prevent this. Suicide attempts with firearms are almost always lethal, while most people who have attempted suicide do not attempt it again. For those of us with kids, do you know if there are guns in the homes where your kids hang out? As your kids get older, we know less and less about where they're hanging out and who they're hanging out with. Accidents and impulsiveness happen way too easily, and there is often no second chance when guns are involved. Our kids deserve our protection, and it is our responsibility to provide it. This is not a debate about rural versus urban areas, nor is it a debate about gun control. It's simply about protecting kids' lives. It boggles my head and pains my heart that a resolution that brings more guns near children is recommended by the Resolutions Board, but one that keeps guns out of kids' hands is not. The NRA wants guns everywhere, and moms like me just want to keep them out of kids' hands. Please vote no for Resolution 2 and yes to Resolution 15. Thank you.
Thank you. After Laura, it's Jane Van.
Davis.
Davis.
Davis, yeah. I need some help on writing. But my two oldest sons did graduate from District 211 and got great education, so thank you very much, and I do want to thank you all for your service. I know this is a hard job, and I appreciate that you are all dedicated public servants working for the betterment of the whole community. And I would ask the board at this time to consider, I guess there's a resolution regarding electric buses. And I recently attended a webinar on electric school buses, and there was a representative from Oxford Community School District in Michigan who spoke on their experiences. A little background on the school. Oxford is 12 schools, covering 77-plus square miles, over 5,000 students, and they've been trialing the school buses for the past year. The representative shared their experience of success with the electric buses, which are from Lion Electric in Joliet, Illinois. The district was concerned about health impacts of the children. Other concerns were safety, savings, and range. And so what did they find? They found them to be very reliable, they decreased the pollution, they loved how clean the buses were, the buses were so quiet that the students were quiet, they weren't shouting over the mortars. The Lion buses have an increased aisle width, which gave easier access for emergency exits. The range was 125 miles, the drivers preferred the buses. They had no problems with very cold weather, they used these electric buses as educational tools for their STEM classes, and they found the cost to be about eight cents a mile to run the buses, where the diesel cost was about 35 cents per mile. So obviously, there, right now, there is an upfront cost on electric buses, but this school district estimated that they had savings of average of $1,200 a quarter. There were major savings, though, in fuel and maintenance, and there is also an expectation that as more and more of these buses are going out... that as more and more of these buses are going out, which the representative from Lion said that they had some shipping to Minnesota and Michigan and I can't remember some of the other states. But I understand that there is money, though, too, in the recent, hopefully, signed infrastructure bill. So I would ask for the school board to budget for future buses to be electric. I believe it's the right thing to do for our children, it's for the community and for the environment. And it will save the school district a lot of money in the long run. So thank you again for letting me speak and thank you very much for your service.
Next is Jane Van, followed by Robbie Volkmer.
My name is Jane Van Woveler and I am a resident of D-211. I have spoken before this board, as well as the D-15 School Board, numerous times. I speak my voice. I speak to voice my personal thoughts with the hope that my words might also represent others in our community who may not feel comfortable speaking in a public environment. I know that differing opinions may be vocalized, which is a good thing. However, oftentimes, there are people who come before our school boards who are not from the towns or the cities that the board represents. They don't tell the board this when giving their opinions as to how our schools should be run. They are not representing those who the district services. Oftentimes, these people are speaking the beliefs of a nationwide organization. I'm going to suggest a method that our district can adopt that will allow our board members and community know that a speaker is or is not a member of the district communities. When an individual chooses to speak at a D-21 board meeting, they can be asked by an employee of the district to see something such as a driver's license or recent utility bill with a current address. If the speaker does not reside within the district, the employee can then place the letter NR for non-resident before the written name. When the board then calls the speaker, they can simply say the name and the words "non-resident." This alerts the board and the audience that the speaker does not represent the community. This has no detrimental effect on the speaker's First Amendment rights. This only lets the public know that the speaker is not a community member. We must keep the school boards in our country community-based and not allow outsiders to influence the decisions made on behalf of our students, employees, and community.
Robbie Volkmer, followed by Jim McGrath.
My name is Robbie Volkmer and I reside in D-211. First off, thank you, Mr. Kramer, for your service in the Navy and anyone else who has served our country. For the past couple of months, I've been getting feedback from Schaumburg High School students regarding the Powderpuff game. Schaumburg High School, as you are aware, decided to drop the Powderpuff game this year in lieu of a kickball game that was extremely unsuccessful. But upperclassmen decided to take matters into their own hands and planned a successful Powderpuff event outside of school. I'm here to speak on behalf of students who are fearful of repercussions if they were to do so. There have been threats made by coaches and others in the administration. I will read as many statements as time allows and ask to have the remaining statements entered into the written mittens. The statement's from Erin, who's a senior at Schaumburg High School. "The school taking away Powderpuff pulled us away from gender equality. It is the only event where girls challenge the everyday gender norms and get to play a sport dominated by males and the boys become the cheerleaders. It may have started as a joke, but the teams took it seriously and school spirit and class pride hit a pinnacle." Katrina, senior at Schaumburg High School. "I have been looking forward to Powderpuff since I knew it was a thing. I watched my brother and his friends play football and Powderpuff would have been my chance. I was so proud of the upperclassmen that came together to make this possible. Powderpuff should be a theme because it is a tradition and so many girls look forward to participating." Kimberly, senior at Schaumburg High School. "There are various reasons why Powderpuff should be continued at Schaumburg High School in the future. The homecoming Powderpuff football game has been a tradition for so long. A day where the girls can step out of their comfort zone and play a game of football and guys can also step out of their comfort zone by becoming the cheerleaders. As of right now, this is the only activity, club, sport, et cetera, which supports going against gender norms and stereotypes. Canceling this game wasn't due to COVID or the event itself not being inclusive enough based on gender. It was canceled because the adults can't accept people for who they are and how they identify. None of the students at Schaumburg High School cared of someone who identified as non-binary, gender fluid, transgender, et cetera, played in the game. It's the board who has an issue allowing those people to play in a game, which is solely made to be a fun event. I was very upset and disappointed this year to find out that the Powderpuff game was replaced with a school event that nobody wanted due to the board not allowing the game, as well as the false hope teachers have given us since the beginning of the school year that the event would happen. The board made this decision without even considering how the students would feel about it and with no time or heads-up to possibly change anything. I'm so proud of our junior and senior class who were able to come up with their own Powderpuff event that had over 200 people attend, which had food and also held a donation event for someone in the Schaumburg community. Not only did we get our Powderpuff back, we outdid the school and what they would have done for us. But with all of this hard work, it was also very costly and time-consuming for the girls to put together and shouldn't have been done and shouldn't have to be done every year in the future." Bethany, senior at Schaumburg High School. "Powderpuff is a well-known game that is played across many schools in Illinois and it was extremely disappointing when we found out that it had been taken away. Powderpuff is a game that many girls and guys look forward to during homecoming week. It gives us a chance to play a sport that is played by men. Taking the sport away made all junior and seniors lose out on an amazing opportunity that we couldn't have had this year, especially after not having school since March 2020. I think many of us expected way more and we were very disappointed. I understand the concerns of many people on the board and parents involving gender norms. But this game is meant to include everybody and all of the students at our school know and support this. I hope you seriously take into consideration and listen to what we have to say because this is a very important thing to many students no matter the reasons. I do not believe that it should have been taken away." Okay, I'll stop there for now and I'll provide you with the student's statements to be included in the written mittens. Thank you.
Jim McGrath, followed by Stacy Gale.
Hi, my name is Jim McGrath. I am the Legal Women Voters of Illinois Gun Violence Prevention Specialist for the state, also a member of the Palatine Legal Women Voters. I'm here to advise the D-211 Board of the League's position on a couple of the resolutions. I'm going to start with Resolution 15 first, the Child Safe Gun Storage Resolution proposed by Glenn Ellen. So the question is, why should the school board be concerned about safe gun storage? The Resolutions Committee has recommended a do-not-adopt vote on Resolution 15 because they thought the school would be going too far to tell people what to do in their own homes. Illinois currently already has a safe storage gun law. This is not a request for a new law. All it is, is to increase the age requirement for those who may gain access from under 14 to under 18. If we cover that age range, that is the age range of most school shooters as well as most teen suicides who commit suicide with a gun. So this proposal would close a gap in our current law and further protect students. Now, we all know unsecured guns end up at schools. That's a fact. So the League requests a do-adopt for Resolution 15. Resolution 2 is a Students Misnamed, the Student Safety Protection Plan, proposed by Mercer County. This proposal by Mercer County to enable school boards to allow any school employee, including teachers, to carry a concealed weapon has been voted, has failed numerous times. You probably all know that. The Resolutions Committee has recommended a do-approve, a do-not-approve on, I'm sorry, a do-approve on Resolution 2 that has previously failed. Point of fact, the Federal Gun-Free School Zone Act of 1995 requires any firearm on school property other than that carried by law enforcement be unloaded and in a locked box. So this proposal would require school districts to break that federal law. So you need to know that. So when you're considering how you're going to vote on that proposal, go read the law. You can Google it, Gun-Free School Zone Act of 1995. It's only five pages long. So the best proposal really is to keep the shooter out of the school and provide counseling for any at-risk child. The Legal Women Voters request a do-not-adopt on Resolution 2. Two other resolutions, 11 and 12. One has to do with requesting federal funding from the federal government for solar, wind turbines, et cetera. The Resolutions Committee has requested a do-not-approve. I don't understand that. If the federal government's going to give you money, why would you support that? And the second one, Resolution 12, is to same thing, federal funding for electric school buses and charging stations. So again, why would you refuse that? Thank you.
Stacy Gale, followed by Karen Powers.
Good evening. My name is Stacy Gale. I'm resident of D-211. I request the board vote no to the proposed revisions to IIAA and INB. Unfortunately, during the previous board meeting, Mr. Schumacher did not provide a clear picture of the process, the length of the process, or clarification of board notification. If you, as sitting board members, do not have a clear understanding of the policy after discussing it with each other, Mr. Schumacher and Dr. Small, how can you expect parents to understand? There's a lot of work to be done and since you are revising a policy requiring a significant action by a parent, you need to seek parental input into the process. Another glaring omission is the student. Where in the process does a student have the ability to advocate for their learning? Given the history of this administration, it is imperative to include a process for students to submit a concern, knowing it will reach the board. Mr. Rosenbloom, I think it's great parents trust you, but my question is, is why do parents trust you more than the teachers or administrators? Are they afraid of retribution or that they won't be taken seriously? If you think the policy is fine, why aren't you advising parents to use it? Ms. Cavill, how can you determine the feedback loop isn't too long when you don't know how long it is? How can you assert having teachers complete a form for supplemental instruction material is overly burdensome? I don't care that you use 25 worksheets a day. It's irrelevant and clearly shows your self-interest. I see the potential for teachers to use this policy to circumvent what you call a burdensome curricular approval process. So what happens when a teacher doesn't adhere to the guidelines? Is she disciplined? Is the district sued? I know you trust the teachers and administrators and I do too, for the most part, but what about the rogue teacher? The policy needs to be clear as to what happens when a teacher doesn't follow the guidelines. Mr. McGowan, there are several steps and reports generated by administrators with each step, but the board is not a recipient of any of the reports until the parent has said no multiple times, as noted by Mr. Kramer. Shouldn't the board receive each report along the way? Please demand the administration give a voice to students. Not all students are comfortable with public speaking, but all deserve to be heard. Mrs. Klimkowitz, I'm disgusted by the fact that you said if multiple people share a concern, it should be brought to the board. Why does it have to be a group? Do they have to stand up during the board meeting and speak before you, Madam President, will consider the concern valid? Once again, you defer to the administration instead of taking in a leadership role. Mr. Kramer, thank you for understanding how this process is daunting for parents with no real resolutions, just reports and investigations. Thank you for acknowledging these policies are making it more difficult for parents to be involved in their children's education. Thank you for representing the community and thank you for your service. Mr. Dombrowski, thank you for seeking to be proactive with the development of this policy and acknowledging the undue burden it puts on parents. Obviously, you understand the diversity of our community and are seeking to make the process accessible to everyone. You understand the real-life burden this policy currently puts on parents. Please vote no to the proposed policy revisions.
Thank you. Karen Powers, followed by Kristin Steele.
Good evening, my name is Karen Powers. I have a daughter, a junior, in 211. I would like to address the discussion that took place at the October Board of Education meeting regarding policy IIAA. Specifically, the timeline Mr. Kramer outlined and how far into the process I went and my reasons for not pursuing further action. I emailed Mr. Schumacher, Dr. Small, and the Administrative Board Policy Group, which included Ms. Klimkowitz, Mr. Kramer, Ms. Hummel, and Mr. Teniper. I emailed them a very detailed account of my experience with this policy. Included in the email were the videos I found to be inappropriate and Mr. Schumacher's report. From start to finish, the process took four weeks. And I only made it to step three. Of the six people who received my email, only two have reached out to me. I will do my best, for the sake of time, to summarize my experience. I met with the teacher, the department chair, and afterwards, the principal. After several phone conversations with the principal, I met with Mr. Schumacher. It would be at this point when things came to a grinding halt. I was asked to fill out a form detailing my complaint. He then told me it would take two weeks to complete an investigation and report his findings. At this point, I knew they were stalling. Inappropriate videos were shown in a classroom. The teacher did not seek approval from the department chair. The department chair defended the teacher. The teacher abandoned the approved material to show violent and vulgar videos. One video repeatedly used the F-word and the N-word. The other video showed an execution of a hooded man and the gunning down of a church choir. Why would this take two weeks to investigate? It felt as if the administration was going through the motions and pacifying me. Ms. Cavill and Mr. Rosenbloom's comments at the October meeting were completely dismissive to not only the parents' concerns, but also Mr. Kramer's. Both went on to defend teachers as being skillful and knowledgeable. I don't deny that. There are wonderful teachers in this district. However, I don't feel this teacher even looked at the guidelines laid out in this policy. How are parents supposed to feel comfortable questioning material in the classroom and to be heard when two sitting board members are defending the teachers before knowing what they have done? The policy is daunting to parents. I believe it was designed to do so and to protect the teachers. In my final phone conversation with Mr. Schumacher and the principal, I asked if the teacher would be disciplined. He said it was a human resources issue and could not be discussed with me. I asked if he would be notifying the other parents in the class and he said no because too much time had elapsed. Finally, I told them the main reason, that my husband and I decided to stop and that was our concern of retribution. was our concern of retribution. The resolution was less than satisfactory, but Mr. Schumacher led you to believe otherwise. I simply gave up because the writing was on the wall. I will never know if the teacher was held accountable for showing violent and vulgar videos without parent consent, and the other parents in the class will never know what their children saw. I have no way of knowing if Mr. Schumacher's recommendations are being implemented. There was no closure for me. I have shared the videos and my experience with family and friends. Not one person, of which included educators and former D-211 teachers, found the videos to be-
You have one minute remaining.
... found the videos to be educational or appropriate. And sadly, not one person throughout this process, from the teacher to the district administration, denounced what the teacher did or the videos, and most of them are parents themselves. I see this policy as once again on the agenda for this evening. I'm asking you delay approving the policy until a more thorough evaluation can be conducted. Thank you.
Thank you. Kristin Steele followed by C. Yamaguchi.
Good evening. For several months, we as a community have heard students and parents talk about being ignored by this Board of Education and administration and not having a voice. Last fall, we heard students speak about how their sexual assault and harassment claims were repeatedly ignored. We have also listened to students state that administrators have ignored their request for mental health support. Most recently, and has already been spoken, Schaumburg High School students were repeatedly ignored by the administration for their desire to keep the tradition of Powder Puff. Students use their voice and their power of working together to put on a well-attended and fun event. It was disheartening to learn that some students were threatened with punishment if they supported the planned student activity instead of the administration-sponsored activity. Parents were upset and supported their kids. These are just a few examples. There are more. But it is clear that student voices seem not to be heard, and community members are not being represented by the current Board of Education as a whole. All of the above are just examples of situations that have occurred in light of there being an elected school board that is supposed to act on behalf of the community, as well as there being many board policies that address some of these issues. While I am sure misuse, ignorance, disregard of board policy or policies has happened in the past, the past 18 months, it is abundantly clear that this board, both prior and current members, do not understand some of these policies. Back in April, Mr. Dombrowski brought up several Board of Education policies that he requested to be reviewed, after which the community heard nothing until it's been updated and discussed again months later at another board meeting, like last month when policy revisions of II/AA, which is the selection of instructional materials, and INB, which is Teaching of Controversial Issues, were discussed. Revisions will be discussed this evening, as indicated on the agenda. But before your discussion, I have some questions. Mrs. Klimkowitz, in your mind, how many people need a voice, need to voice a concern in order to be heard by the board? You said last month that a parent concern doesn't need to go to the board, but a hot item does. Is a hot item two parents, 12 parents? What does that, what does that mean? You also stated that because this policy has not been updated since 2010, and you have heard very little, if any, complaints about instructional materials or controversial topics, that the policy must be working. Just because you do not hear about something does not mean that it is working. On the contrary, Mr. Rosenbloom stated that he has lots of friends with kids in the district, and he hears from them almost every other day regarding something we are doing or not doing, and they reach out to him regarding curriculum, books, lessons, and words used. Mr. Rosenbloom hears from community members frequently about this topic, and sometimes he refers the situation to the principal, the administration, depending on the situation. This would indicate to me that there are selections of instructional material and teaching of controversial issues that are occurring more frequently than either the Board of Education knows as a whole, or that the administration is not sharing with the board, both of which violate this policy. The board owns this policy, among others, and the board should direct the administration to continue to improve policies and seek input from those impacted the most. Specific to II/AA and INB, there should be maximum timelines for each step in the process, as well as an overall maximum timeline for this process. When an issue of controversial subject matter or material does arise, time is of the essence, and this policy should serve to be proactive and not reactive. The board should be included in the distribution of reports by the principal, assistant superintendent, and review board. It seems quite clear that the board is the last stop, and they are informed when it's really bad, or it's been dragging on and the issue is not resolved. Is this supposed to be the purpose of any policy?
You have one minute remaining.
When our Board of Education is elected by the people of the community to be advocates of our students and community? Also, part of this policy should be an outline of steps when a teacher or administrator does not follow the guidelines set forth, and what disciplinary action steps should be taken to ensure that this will not repeatedly fail. Several Board of Education members said that latitude and professional experience must be taken into account, and is both apparent and professional, I do agree. However, it has to be within the guidelines of the approved curriculum. At the same time, this policy must serve as a vehicle to allow parents to know that what is being taught in the classroom and give them the mechanism to voice a concern in a way that is not intimidating, dismissive, or belittling to the parent and not drawn out in time. As it stands, I do not think there is enough information or understanding of the policy and process to vote in favor of it, and request that there is more time, effort, and discussion with other stakeholders on the understanding of the policy and procedures with further revisions-
Your speaking time has ended.
... before it is brought to another vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. C. Yamaguchi followed by C. Anzalmo.
I'm a mom of a 211 student, and I feel like I'm beating a dead horse here, but I just want to say, I feel that we should use our minds and think about some of the numbers, COVID numbers that are in the newspaper. For example, Today's Daily Herald wrote that new COVID cases on Wednesday were 5,044. Seems like a big number, but when you look at Illinois' population of 12,800,000, really that represents .039% of our population, which is really nothing. I'm at the point where I think we just need to put COVID behind us, and we have so many bigger issues that everyone's speaking about tonight in our schools that I just want to reflect on some numbers. 2017 numbers from IDPH and CDC show a total of 606 total youth deaths in Illinois. And now, no kids should die, we all agree, but I'd like to read the list. 143 died in accidents, 105 died from assault, 73 died from suicide. And I think that's like the biggest one that can touch any of us at any time. 57 died of cancer, 39 from congenital issues, 189 from other issues. If you talk about COVID in 2020, 2021, 18 died. So I just want to say that I think we all need to get our priorities straight. We need to be worried about our kids being safe in schools. I've seen a number of videos already this year with fights at Fremd and Palatine High School, and I can totally appreciate having police in schools for when things like that happen. Besides that, CRT, explicit sex ed, that has no place in schools. Number one, we need to educate and challenge all the kids, whether they're the bright kids or kids who are struggling. We need to give everybody the help. And we have a lot of ground to make up academically from the past 19 months, and I really think we just need to focus on the basics. Thank you.
Thank you. C. Anzalmo.
Thank you, Board of Education, for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. I am a concerned community member and a taxpayer. I am a reluctant speaker, but based on speakers from previous meetings, I can no longer remain quiet. At the beginning of the pandemic, I thought District 211 did what they thought was best. Once we hit August of 2020, we knew a lot more about this virus. I am completely disappointed in how the district has operated since then. Mediocre virtual learning, kids going to school less than a full day, bizarre schedule, et cetera. Even at this point, November 2021, I still feel you have a lot of work to do and plenty of room to improve, especially to make up for all the lost academic progress for these kids. I am surprised that as the largest school district, high school district, 211 did not push back on Pritzker, ISBE, IDPH. I've heard many parents express frustration at many issues within the school district: explicit sex education, critical race theory, masks, funding for SAT prep, et cetera. And it is appalling that these concerned parents could potentially be labeled domestic terrorists when all they want is what is best for their kids, and they should have a say in what it might, what is taught to their kids. I have had enough of the mask mandate. Even as a senior, I take 100% responsibility for my own health and well-being. It appears COVID will become endemic. There are steps we can all take to protect ourselves if we feel the need, including getting vaccinated or not and wearing masks or not. It should be our individual choice to do either of these things. Certainly, kids have many other things to worry about versus dying from COVID, such as crimes, drugs, accidents. Kids have a 99.99% survival rate from COVID. As taxpayers, we should all be concerned with the direction the local schools are taking. The quality of our schools is related to our property values. I would like to see a focus on teaching, not politics or ideologies, in the classroom. For example, get back to teaching, reading, writing, math, biology, history, physical ed, foreign languages, art, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. That concludes our public comments, and the next item of business is the public hearing request for waiver. The recommended action is that the public hearing to discuss the waiver request to increase the maximum allowable driver education fee to an amount higher than $50 be opened. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
At this time, I don't have any speakers that wish to address this request for the waiver. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to the waiver?
Oh, no.
Okay. If there is none, is there any discussion? Okay. If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Hi.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Point of order, what are we doing here? I thought we had to open?
Oh, I apologize. I got the motion. We're opening the waiver.
We opened up the public comments. Now we have to vote to close them, and I don't, and I think that the vote comes later on in the agenda.
Yeah, that's item 10A.
Right. You have to vote to close. We have, I, we opened it up. I've got the motion. There's no one here to speak. I want to know if there's any discussion from anyone, and then a roll call.
And then a roll call on what? Motion to close the public hearing.
I apologize. I've gotten confused here. This should be a voice vote to open it. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay. And we've opened it up, and I have no one to speak to it. Okay. The second part of the motion, then, if there's no one to speak to it, and there's no comments right now in regards to it, it'll be on the topic later. I need the motion. The recommended action is going to be that the public hearing to discuss the waiver request to increase the maximum allowable driver education fee to an amount higher than $50 be closed.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. And a voice vote, please. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Thank you. All right. We don't have any presentations today. The next item, then, is the consent agenda. And are there any items that any of the board members would like to have removed from the consent agenda? Okay. It'll be two action items. The first is that the consent agenda be approved with the removal of the minutes of the regular meeting from October 21, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
The, so someone did want to pull the approval of the minutes?
Yes. Not all board members were present for that.
For, you said that, I think you said October 21st. It was October 5th.
That one is going to be later on because it was postponed. So this one is for the October 21st meeting. Mr. Bradley was absent. That's why we're going to vote on it separately.
Okay. So that was pulled by Mr. Bradley?
No, it was pulled by procedure.
By procedure?
Right.
Because Mr. Bradley was absent.
So if somebody's absent, it's automatically not part of the consent agenda?
Right. It's handled separately.
So why was it even put in here? If we knew that Mr. Bradley wasn't here, why was it part, wasn't there on October 21st, why was it put in the consent agenda items anyway?
The consent agenda items are typical routine business, and that's where it belongs.
But we just said-
It's standard practice to remove something like this when someone's not present, or if a board member singles out a particular item, they want particular discussion upon.
It's there. And you said there's two, there's two ways to remove something from the consent agenda. One is a board member requests it. The other one, in the specific item of the approval of minutes, if the board member wasn't there for that meeting, it's automatically not, it's automatically pulled from consent agenda. So why is it-
To be voted on separately, not off the consent agenda. It's just a matter of to be voted on separately as not part of the entire rest of the items on the consent agenda.
Because typically, the consent agenda will have all of the meetings listed that the board has had, given within that timeframe. So what this recommended action is that we approve the consent agenda with the removal of these minutes, and we vote on those separately. Any other discussion in regards to it? May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Bradley?
Hi.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
What are we voting on?
You're voting on the consent agenda without the minutes of October 21st.
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the minutes of the regular meeting from October 21, 2021 be approved. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion on that one? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Hi.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Point of order, if a board member wasn't present for the meeting, how can they vote on whether or not to approve those minutes?
They can either abstain, or if they agree with the minutes, they can also vote on to approve them.
Even though they weren't at the meeting?
That is my understanding.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right. Then that brings us to special reports and communication. We have the Freedom of Information Act requests. Those are information items. The next item is the school report cards, and that's an action item. Recommended action is that the Board of Education directs the superintendent to post access to the 2021 school report cards to the district and school websites no later than November 30, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Dr. Small, is there anything you would like to share in regards to this?
The school report cards are produced by the state for the last school year. In this particular year, they're showing limited data across our schools and certainly every school across the state because of the unique school year of the 2021. We continue to look forward for additional comprehensive data that the state typically provides, and it is expected to be provided in the future.
Any questions or... Okay. If not, then may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is the, under the placement testing of incoming freshmen. That's an information item.
We've begun welcoming the class of 2026. Almost 3,000 incoming freshmen have begun the process of becoming an official District 211 student. This includes taking the placement test that occurred on Saturday, October 16. Incoming freshman nights for- Incoming freshman nights for parents and students to learn about the tremendous opportunities our schools offer in coursework, career pathway exploration, activities, athletics, and how to proceed through course selection. We begin course selection for all of our students in the upcoming weeks as the choices of our students drive our master schedule development and ultimately our staffing needs. Our timeline allows us to be ready for engagement early in the recruiting process of new teachers for the upcoming school year. This process includes our current teachers, our Student Services Department, and many other staff members who help our students and families transition to their next new year in high school.
Thank you.
I have just a couple of questions. Is this test administered in person? Is it an in-person test?
Yes.
And, um, is, do we provide transportation to students to get to these tests if necessary or if needed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions in regards to the freshman testing? Okay, if not, then we'll move on to the un-
Well, I'm sorry. I'm sorry?
Have you seen the freshman guidebook?
Yes.
Yeah, because they have all the bus routes in there for each school that they see.
I just wanted to make sure so that everybody was aware.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm going to remind fellow board members to please speak closer to the mics. I didn't hear a word that you two said.
Sorry, I, I was just asking if, if Ms. Cavill had been presented with the Incoming Freshman Guidebook, which has all of the transportation, bus routes, and information and, and if that material was something that might be beneficial, you know, for, for her knowledge.
Thank you.
And I was saying that this was important for the community to hear and also we're talking about an incoming class.
Thank you.
As opposed to standing freshmen.
Okay, thank you. All right, that leads us to unfinished business. And the first item there is the approval. The recommended action is that the minutes of the special meeting of October 5th, 2021 be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? This is the one where we had a couple of board members that were absent. Okay, then may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Present.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstained.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item is the 2021 Proposed Tax Levy and Truth in Taxation Resolution. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the attached resolution, which sets forth the amount of $245,015,000 as the proposed 2021 levy for Township High School District 211 and directs publication of a notice of public hearing on the proposed levy at its meeting to be held on December 9th, 2021. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion.
Yeah, I, I'd like to start by saying that with inflation at about 6% and, and the value of the dollar in the community being less, I, I think that setting a 1.6% tax increase at this point is, um, is burdensome. Um, considering that this is going to be applied to a budget in another year or so. Um, we have a, a very healthy amount of reserves and we've consistently had surpluses on both sides in revenue and expenditures to the point where, you know, we, we could have easily 5%, 6% of our budget returned to reserves. We haven't done a good job of, of finding utilization for the land sale proceeds. Um, this board hasn't discussed that. We've held that off until we have another community engagement. Um, I think it's our burden and our responsibility as board members to ensure that all of the money that the taxpayers have put into our trust is, is used for the benefit of students. And, and right now, we, we haven't done that with what we have. You know, we're, I think 54% of reserves. We should be closer to 33. You know, even 40% would, would be something reasonable. But if, if we can't find good uses for 14% of that reserve, then I, I can't see increasing our property tax amount at this point.
Any other discussion? Okay.
We-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
The last time the Board of Education had a discussion about what to do with the land sale proceeds was, you know, last February, March. And of, of course, that was a different board. That was before the April election. Created an opportunity, or the majority of the board at that point wanted to see if there was an opportunity to abate some portion. We never determined an amount. And push a piece of legislation through the Illinois State House that would allow us to abate some portion or perhaps all of those land sale proceeds without being subject to PTEL or the compounding into infinity sort of, you know, apparatus that we have to usually work with when we're talking about abatement. And, um, of course, Illinois being Illinois, that failed. And this board hasn't had the opportunity yet, or we haven't had the discussion yet about what we wish to do with those land sale proceeds. And I think that that is a really important discussion that we need to have. We have to remember that should the majority of this board determine some amount of that to be abated, we do have until March to do that. And so even though the levy and possible discussion of land sale proceeds and abatement are very much interdependent of each other, they're subject to different timelines. So I do think we certainly, this board, it hasn't had a discussion about what to do with this money, which is one of the reasons why, um, one of our funds is closer to the 50% than the numbers that Mr. Dombrowski is saying is more reasonable. I certainly think that this board has to have that conversation and we have time to have that conversation, ideally in January, I would say, when there's sufficient time to discuss all possibilities and that would include an abatement. But this board hasn't had that discussion and I think it's a really important part. At the same time, even though it's certainly linked to the levy, they're subject to different timelines and they are two separate conversations, an abatement and a levy. So inflation, you know, as a response, certainly skyrocketing. To me, then if we're looking at, you know, PTEL having a relationship with CPI, it would be more strategic to, if we're going to talk about tax relief, to do that next year when we see CPI, which is not reflecting of the current rate of inflation. Obviously, the next year, that would be different. And that's part of the discussion we can certainly have in January about what this board wishes to do, you know, with the reserves in general and certainly with the land sale proceeds. Uh, so, you know, that's how I feel about this situation and what's before us specifically tonight.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Dr. Small, are you okay if I kind of run through a little bit of the, the timeline? Or was that something that you might prefer?
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Beginning in January, with a final decision made prior to March, the board may consider an abatement to the levies. Is that the timeline you're talking to? Uh, this discussion will include the consideration of the updated financial position and projection, including the actual 2021 CPI that's available in January, consideration of an abatement following the new recapture levy law related to designated property appeals or heirs, and the designation of the $17.7 million of revenue from the land sale of almost exactly one year ago.
So I, I think to reflect on Ms. Cavill's comments, we have time. Right now, we, we need to, in order to meet the requirements by the state of Illinois to, um, approve a levy, which is in December, we need to discuss and approve a tentative levy, a proposed levy, right now. It is then open until our December board meeting, during which time the community can reach out to your board members and let us know your thoughts. I welcome that. Um, and, and we can then, at the December meeting, there's a hearing on the proposed levy. And if approved, adoption of the proposed levy in December. And as has been pointed out, if we approve the levy as proposed, we still have time until March to discuss our financial situation, what the CPI is, which we'll find out in January, and make a decision regarding an abatement. And an abatement for the community's knowledge, because we have people in our audience and, and online listening, is an opportunity for us to change that levy amount and reduce your tax bill differently than we'd be approving next month. So if next month we approve 1.6% and in January, February, or March, want to change that, we have the ability to do that before we receive our tax bills. So we have the ability to lower that based on actual and factual data that we will be receiving in January. So I wanted to make sure that I comment on that.
Sir? All right, for clarification, the, the, that would affect the tax bill when? If we do, um, the abatement and that, when that, which tax bill?
Uh, the tax bill, uh, first tax bill would be the one that's issued in the fall.
It'll be which one?
In the fall.
Yeah, the, the fall bill.
In the fall, okay.
Your file bill.
Any other comments?
Yeah, um, what we're seeing here is a classic case of kicking a can down the road. We bought the land almost two years ago. What we're going to do with it, that plus the ever-building reserves that, that we have really needs to be part of the discussion to even consider the long-term effects of whatever levy that we're, we are going to, to vote on. I, I, I think it does have an impact now and should have been part of the discussion rather than delaying it, delaying it, delaying it. We don't want to handle that. We don't want to handle that. I know that they are separate discussions, but they are joined at the hip.
It was only one year ago that we actually got those proceeds in hand.
This is 2021, right? We sold the land in 2019.
Yes, but when we got the money, we actually received the money.
Any other questions? All right, I'm, I'm going to add to this also because I know there's been quite a bit of discussion in regards to it. And I'd like to keep in mind that we have maintained our, our buildings and there really isn't an urgency to spend that $17 million this quickly. Let's see what we need to do. Um, we're going to be doing the strategic plan. We need to get some more information from the community. Um, we've had input. The land, um, really was supposed to be for a school, something for the kids. And one of the things that I think is really important, whatever we decide to do with it, how can it best benefit our students? What can we do to, to enhance and to keep our, our, um, our school safe? And we don't have any debt. So, and I think that's important to, we have to keep remembering that because this money has to stretch out for a number of years. I think next year and maybe going into January, we'll have a better handle of what CPI is going to be going forward and what costs have gone up. And we'll be back in school for, well, almost a full year to, to really get a handle of what our expenses have been and a lot of costs have been going up. The utility costs, things of that nature. Where are we going to be at? I know we have Mr. Bradley, who is on the Facility Committee. And maybe he can share some information also at, at that point.
Certainly.
Of some of the projects and, and things going forward.
Absolutely. And I know currently we're working on some of the roofs on the building. Um, when we look at the auditoriums at three of the schools I had to visit, um, a lot of update needs to be done for ADA assistance, um, where we're not there currently. Uh, the arts department is dramatically failing and a lot of kids want to revamp art where they're sharing space with the Home Economics Department. And I think the two are separate and they need to have their separate space. So there's a lot of need for funding in those areas.
And those are some discussions that we'll have a little bit down the road. Because I know, you know, we do need to know, where do we want to spend the money? What is it going to be used for and how best is it going to benefit the students and their education and their college and career readiness, things of that nature? So right now-
Go ahead, didn't mean to cut you off.
So right now, the motion that's on the floor here is that we, um, go with the levy amount that has been proposed to us and that we have the open meeting, the public notice of the hearing on December 9th, 2021.
I was going to make a comment. Correct me if I'm wrong, but did I just hear you say that let's kick the can even further down the road of the $17 million until we, we, we go through the strategic planning process?
Mr. Kramer, I'm not kicking any can. I'm trying to bring it to reality. We do not have any debt right now. So you need to have some money in savings to be able to take care of things.
But we have very, 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 very high reserves.
And I'm not certain what's going to happen next year. We had savings, we had money that we didn't spend last year because of COVID and because of, um, not being able to do the things that we normally do. So what I'm asking for is give us an opportunity, give the administration an opportunity to see what some of the real expenses are. And then we can take a look and go forward. That's what I'm asking.
It is not kicking the can down the road, making a decision when you have all the available information. Making a decision without all the available information isn't responsible.
That's your opinion, right, right, Mrs. Cavill?
Yes, it is my opinion.
Thank you.
And so- Mr. Kramer?
Kicking the can down the road is just another way of saying, let's hear from this board, not the previous board that doesn't sit anymore, this board, about what we want to do with the money and collect all the information that we need so that this board as a collective can make a decision. And we're not talking about five years. Nobody's mentioned something like that. We're talking about January, February, March.
My comment was five-year strategic plan.
I understand.
Getting into that.
Nobody said a timeline on a strategic plan. That was the length of the last plan.
Okay, is there any other discussion?
Yeah, I kind of want to put it in, put it in perspective. Um, digging into it and learning. You said we have really, really high reserves. What's, what's that number? Mr. Kramer, do you know it? Does, what'd you, around 30 million was what we keep tossing out between the land sale and the surplus from last year?
I, what I previously said is this, uh, $17 million from the land sale.
Correct.
And then because of surpluses due to COVID.
Correct.
Okay, there were no students. We didn't need to spend a lot of money. That, that adds about another, what's the difference between 17 and, and 30? Another $13 million between over two, over two fiscally-
Let's, let's just round up to 31, okay? I want to put it in perspective for people who, everyday people who don't understand. This district is almost a million-dollar-a-day district, all right? So $30 million is essentially one-month savings. It's not necessarily a surplus. So I think we should err on the side of caution for that reason, number one. Number two, we have equity initiatives coming. We have student wellness initiatives coming. We have counselors that we pay for with government funding, with ESA, correct? That we, at some point, are either going to have to retain or let go. We'd like to be able to keep paying the counselors that are supporting these students post-COVID, correct? So I think it's just, it's, I don't see what the rush is, would be my comment publicly. Yeah, I don't think there is a rush. I think it should be used for the students. If there's a possible way to give back to the, the community members, I'm all for it. But the, the student base and the foundation and the quality of education shook up. And $30 million for a million-dollar-a-day district, it's not a surplus. It's a savings at this point. So I just wanted to put that in perspective for people to understand the conversation.
That's a surplus over and above what we already had.
Correct.
So the, the reserves are, are 1.5 million? I can't remember the, the exact figure in dollar amounts, where we're sitting at right now.
I, I'm not certain what it is either at this moment.
Dr. Small, I just have one small question. You know, the levy recapture that, you know, we've, we talked about at the previous board meeting, is that subject to the same deadline in March? Yes. Okay.
The, the, the abate, if you want to abate that, it is.
Right.
It is under the same timeline of the abatement.
And I think it's important, actually, that, um, can you share just a little bit of the new information that we've learned about that law since the last meeting for the public? So we have the deadline in March and then about whether or not that's, the abatement of that recapture is subject to PTEL, as an example. You know, do, do we know, what do we know from the state? Do we know anything additional from the last meeting, like between the last meeting and this one about the levy recapture?
Basically, what you summarized is what we know. Lauren, is there anything else?
Yeah, no, that, that is correct. Um, I think the information that we were waiting to hear last time is whether Cook County would allow us to abate that amount at all. And they have, um, come out with a statement that that is allowable. And we do know that the- And we do know that the recapture levy is not subject to PTEL.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to just add on to what Mr. McGowan was saying about the ESER funds. And we were able to get more social workers, which meets the need of the concern that a number of students and parents had expressed. But that money ends in 2024, I believe it is. So personally, I think if we have more social workers, I'm not going to want to decrease it. So that's an important consideration also for salaries to make sure that we have the staff that can continue staying on at our schools for our students. So I think that that was an important consideration also.
Just to that point, I would defer to administrative recommendations on the amount of social workers we need. That would be my perspective on that, Madam President. Looking at the last 10 years, the district has historically, after budgets, you know, ended with anywhere from $6 to $7 million surplus on our budgets. We should be able to tighten that up. We should be closer to a couple of percentage points.
And I'm certain we can examine that. So something to look forward to in our next discussion then. All right, any other discussion? All right, if not, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to the next item. And that is on the new policy, JHCE Suicide and Depression Awareness and Prevention. The recommended action is that Board Policy File JHCE Suicide and Depression Awareness and Prevention be adopted as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a roll call, please? Or, excuse me, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
All right, that brings us to the next policy, IIAA Selection of Instructional Materials. The recommended action is that the Board Policy File IIAA Selection of Instructional Materials be adapted as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual. Further, that the superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Move to postpone.
I need a second.
To postpone the vote.
We need, do I need a second on it?
A second.
Okay, and?
You have one.
All right, I have one. And is there, you want to discuss it, a discussion?
Yeah, let me, there's obviously some discussion in public comments. I was contacted by Mrs. Powers earlier after she had reviewed the October tape. And she was, shall I say, upset with the comments that were made.
Can you speak a little louder, please?
Okay, she was upset with what the comments that were made and so on and so forth. Our discussion was that I, as a board member, don't have enough information. I don't know the details of what Mrs. Powers experienced. And my suggestion was to write an email to the Policy Committee, the Superintendent, and of course, I'm included on the Policy Committee. That email was sent. And I have read the entire thing. I don't want to go into the detail because Mrs. Powers absolutely described it from what I read in her email. I want to add that there's a little bit of a disconnect. The administration's position was the process from beginning to end took seven school days. Mrs. Powers said it took four weeks or almost a month. I don't understand the disconnect. The other thing that the administration said was that the parent was satisfied with the outcome. And I just heard Mrs. Powers say she was not satisfied. I have to tell you that also in that email, there were a link to really the two, I would say egregiously outrageous videos that were mandatorily assigned by a teacher to be seen by students and to be reviewed and commented on. I would ask that prior to any vote on this matter, that that email that was sent to myself and the other Policy Committee members and the Superintendent be forwarded to each board member. I can't do that. I would ask that that be done. I know there may have to be some redacting in it, names of teachers and that sort of stuff. But I think it's an opportunity to see a process that even though the policy was in a different form and it's not as clearly defined as it is right now, it failed. And so I think that in order to take a look at a very real circumstance on what really happened from both sides is important for our understanding of how the policy works and how it's affected.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I have a comment. My understanding is that the recommendation here is for specific revisions regarding technology on the policy and not the entire policy as it stands for regarding the way in which selection of instructional material is handled, but specifically for revisions on technology. So I'd like to suggest that we go ahead with approving the revisions and that this gets sent back to the Policy Review Committee to review the policy as a whole to possibly come back and make recommended changes outside of those that we're reviewing right now, which is specific on educational technology used.
I beg to disagree with you, Mr. Rosenbloom. The policy as voted on as a whole, beyond how technology is introduced, that is only a very small part of it. The part which clearly is of concern right now is the method by which parents register their objection to what's going on in the classroom. Parents have rights.
Absolutely, I agree. So my suggestion is to approve the technology revisions, which is what's up for discussion and review with this motion.
Mr. Kramer?
And that, can I finish speaking, please, and not be interrupted? I am speaking, period. You can correct me after I'm done. That we adopt the proposed revisions and then send this policy back to the Policy Review Committee, of which Mr. Kramer is a member of, to review the policy as a whole and come back to this board with recommended revisions.
Why would we approve something subject to review? I don't get that, Mr. Rosenbloom. I just don't get that.
Gentlemen.
I'd like to call for a vote on the postponement.
Okay. All right, then may I have a roll call, please, on the recommendation to postpone IIAA Selection of Instructional Materials? Did you have a second? I know you- Yes.
Mr. McGowan.
Mr. McGowan. Okay, a postponement until, do you want to give a specific time or?
I would propose the next board meeting, provided that board members are provided copies of whatever redaction needs to be done of the email that Mrs. Powers sent to the Policy Committee.
Okay. And I'm going to ask if we can have a little bit of leeway, whether it's in the December or January meeting, given-
My concern is that board members be given an opportunity to review both sides of the story and why there's a problem with the policies in entirely-
All right.
January is fine.
Okay, thank you. To postpone it to our January meeting. Is there any urgency in regards to changing the terminology for educational technology?
I think we'll be okay.
Okay, so there's no urgency there. So as far as postponing it to January, there's nothing that we have to do immediately. All right, may I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Rosenbloom?
I'm thinking.
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
This is a vote to postpone, correct?
Correct.
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
Okay, then that takes us to-
The motion was carried, is that correct?
Yes, the motion carried. So it's postponed. We'll bring it back in January. That should give enough time for the board members to receive that communication and for the Policy Committee to meet.
I don't think that the Policy Committee will meet to discuss the revision until after the board has taken a vote.
Well, but then the policy is going to be brought back, as is.
Until there's a vote, that's correct. The current policy stands, that's correct.
But I guess my thought was, if we get feedback, we may want to sit down as a Policy Committee and to see what kind of changes we may be able to make to bring back to the board in January.
No, we need to have a vote on whether or not to approve or disapprove the policy. And then it goes back to the Policy Committee, not an interim step. The policy has already been forwarded by the Policy Committee. And right now, there is a vote to delay voting on it until January.
This was the second reading. So if we're delaying it, it's going to come back as the same policy.
Okay.
And then-
Then we vote yes or no.
Correct.
Okay. And then if it's no, it goes back to the Policy Committee. If it's voted yes, then we're done in January.
Okay, then that drags it out further then.
Am I allowed to ask a question or make a comment? So my understanding is if at the next, so if we receive additional materials and review it and based on seeing that additional materials, there is a no vote on the revision to the policy, the policy will continue to stay in effect, as is, without the technology change, but everything else in the policy will remain the same. And it will be sent back to the Policy Review Board.
Right, the current policy as written remains until there is a replacement policy written.
Then that will continue the discussion into February or even later possibly.
We got to get this one right.
Okay. All right, so the next item then is the proposed policy INB, Teaching About Controversial Issues. And the recommended action is that the Board Policy File INC, Teaching About Controversial Issues be adapted as proposed and included in the Board Policy Manual. Further, that the Superintendent be directed to make appropriate distribution. May I have a roll call, or, excuse me, a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Move to postpone the vote. Move to postpone the vote.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second it. And it's because it's the same process for both of these policies. And I think they go hand in hand. And I think that hopefully with additional information from Ms. Powers, we can understand how the process works from the parents' perspective. And then as a board, balance the parents and the community with the administration's needs and kind of come to a compromise where it's equally weighed and not potentially biased towards either the community and the parents or the teachers and the administration.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yes, for this one, seeing as it's a lengthy policy change and revision, and not just a revision to the technology portion of the policy. And with the way that the last policy revision postponement and comments went, I'd like to recommend, I'll leave it because we're in a postponement discussion here, that we don't postpone, but instead vote no. Keep the policy the way that it is and send it. If there's concern, we gather more information and send it back to the Policy Review Board as soon as possible and not wait until the next board meeting or the one after that or whatever, we're going to make a yes or no decision on this policy. That we say no on the policy, send it back to the Policy Review Board. They can revisit and revise it based on additional information and then bring it back to this board for our review and vote, rather than postponing it so we can gather more information to then say no, perhaps, and then send it back to the Policy Review Board for revision and coming back to the board to make a decision. I just think that's kicking the can down the road, so to speak.
You're circumventing the process by doing that. I can understand the logic, but it needs, because they're joined at the hip, we need to have the same adequate time without a review, an intermediate review by the Policy Committee before we have a complete understanding of both perspectives of how both policies are joined at the hip.
Voting no and sending it back to the Policy Review Board does not put any time constraint on our decision and the Policy Review Board. It's up to the Policy Review Board to make an expedited recommendation back to this board for a vote.
Part of the problem is that there was not enough information in IIAA for the board to make a decision. There's not currently enough information for the board to make a decision on INB. You just, there's no sense of urgency in this. Again, we got to get this right. And the way to do it is to have a review and an understanding of the exchange. And it was very good, it was very detailed, from Mrs. Powers and Mr. Schumacher. So to send this one back, to vote no and send it back to the Policy Committee, which is going to have to be reviewed, which may be different from what's going to be changed in IIAA, just doesn't make any sense to me. They both have to be done at the same time.
And my comment and thought is, sending it back to the Policy Review Board is not putting a sense of urgency on the Policy Review Board until they feel that they have enough information and this board has enough information to make an appropriate recommendation.
Madam President, I call for a vote on the postponement.
Okay. All right, may I have a roll call, please, on the postponement of this policy to the January meeting?
The January board meeting, whatever that is. The January board meeting.
Right, January board meeting.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Point, can I speak real, conversation, speak?
We're in a vote.
We're in the vote. I'm for postponing it. Are you in favor of postponing it to the January meeting?
Yes.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
No.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenbloom?
No.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, I do have-
Does that motion carry?
Yes, the motion carried to postpone it. I do have a question because I think we need some clarification here. At least I need clarification and I would suspect Dr. Small needs clarification. What type of information are we looking for to help us enhance this policy?
Well, okay, we're in a different kind of thing. The current version of the revised policy was put in motion. It failed. There is a disparity between what the administration perceives happened and what the parent perceives happened. Let me finish, please. So what I'm proposing is that because the emails are very detailed from both Mrs. Powers and Mr. Schumacher, Mrs. Powers provided a- Mr. Schumacher, Mrs. Powers provided a copy of Mr. Schumacher's investigation and report, I think the board was not privy to that. So I think that that will provide enough information, plus reviewing these egregious videos, I think that needs to be part of an understanding of the process and what generated it. So all that really has to happen is the board has forwarded a copy of the email with the attachment from Mrs. Powers, we take a look at it, and then we have some time to discern, and then come back in January. The fact finding can be done as soon as the email is forwarded to the board members with certain redactions in there, and then we've already decided not to do it in December, it would probably have to be delayed until January, because that's what the motion was.
Okay.
So the information that needs to be reviewed and understood from both perspectives is already available, it just needs to be made available to the board members.
Your motion's carried, Mr. Kramer.
Yeah, I was asking a question, because I want to get clarification of what we're asking of our administration. And I'm wondering, is it, you know, how many complaints do we get? Our concerns do we get a year? That's what I'm looking for, is some kind of information. So please let me finish.
That's not part of the discussion.
But you keep saying you want information.
I didn't say that.
Madam President, I think, I'll elaborate. Number one, Ms. Powers, if I could see that email, whatever you sent over, I'd like to see it personally, too, if you sent it over. I think information like Mr. Schumacher, this process, I don't doubt that it was constructed to do great things, I don't doubt that at all, but I'd like to see some success from it, if that makes sense, because this sounds like it didn't go well at this point. And I'd like to see trials where this actually works, or when this process was way more efficient, comparable to another instance. Does that make sense?
So maybe that's part of the information that we need. That's what I'm trying to get at.
I missed what you said, Mr. McGowan. Compared to what?
Obviously, I'm not sure what happened. Again, there's apparently evidence that administration said that this was handled one way, it was successful, and it took seven days, correct? Is what...
At the end of your phrase, you said compared to something. That was something I need to...
Compared to, I guess, identical situation?
Okay, that's what I missed. Okay, thank you.
Some type of standard comparison at that point.
So maybe finding out, you know, how often we get these type of concerns are expressed.
And overall success rate.
And getting some of that kind of information would be helpful as we go forward, trying to take a look at this policy, and how best it could work for our staff, our parents, our kids, and being able to do what's right by everyone.
Absolutely. And if something happened where it wasn't as effective or efficient as we wanted to be, we just want to figure out where it failed, so we can do better. Is that...
What can we do differently?
Do we keep records on step one, even though it wasn't, step A, which in the revised policy, it wasn't as clearly laid out in the previous policy, step one?
Okay, I'm going to move us along. I just wanted to clarify...
I'm not finished. I want to ask for clarification, please. You asked a question, I want to ask for clarification. Do we have written records of, at step one, of parents complaining about, raising a concern about either the instruction material, or the teaching about controversial issues? Do we keep records? Do we know? Can you go back five years and say how often this has happened?
I will have to look to see what we have. Step one is at the school level.
So we may or may not have the records.
And if there's questions, I would suggest we send them to Dr. Small, where she can gather some information in regards to it, because they're not going to have that information right here at this board table. All right, with that being said, then, we'll move along, then, to the Illinois Association of School Boards' Resolutions 2021. And Mr. Rosenbloom?
Thank you. First of all, I want to thank members of our community who have commented tonight, and via other communication methods such as email, to members of our Board of Education regarding the resolutions that are being put forth at the delegate assembly next weekend at the Illinois Association of School Board Conference. As many of the public know, and certainly this Board of Education knows, I am the delegate representing District 211 at the delegate assembly, voting on these resolutions on behalf of our school district. And my job as delegate is to represent this school board and the majority decisions and votes by this school board, regardless of my individual thoughts or decisions with regards to each and every resolution, belief statement, position statement. But I represent our school board and our school district at this assembly. So, at our last board meeting, each board member was provided a list of the resolutions that are up for recommendation and voting. And I had asked at that time if anybody had any comments or differences between their recommendation and that of the resolutions committee, to please bring them to my attention. I received feedback from one board member. If anybody would like to make any comments on any of the resolutions this evening, I would certainly welcome that as well. And I also said that any differences from the resolution recommendations would be discussed tonight. And I'd also would like to poll the board members individually on those particular resolutions, so that I can properly take our recommendations, if they do differ, back to the assembly and vote accordingly. So what I'd like to do is individually review each of those resolutions, open it to discussion, and then I will poll each board member for whether you are in favor of that resolution, or not in favor of that resolution. So I'm not asking whether or not you agree with the resolution committee, but whether or not you're in favor, or not in favor of the resolution as presented. Okay? So...
Point of order, does this require a motion? Are we going to vote on this?
No, just general consensus.
Yes.
Consensus on it, yes. Yeah. And are you looking to do each one of these, or just the ones?
No, just the ones where they've been brought forth...
Okay.
That there may be differences between...
Can I have a question, then, Mr. Rosenbloom?
Sure.
You've been the delegate for how long to the IASB?
This is my fifth year.
Fifth year. Have any of the resolutions actually changed anything? Have laws changed? Has there been legislative action, or local action, based on what the ISB resolutions were?
I can't answer that offhand.
No, I'm asking Mr. Rosenbloom.
I can't answer that offhand either. I don't...
Yes, they have, I'm sorry, I'll speak because of being the resolutions chair in the North Cook Division. But yes, there have been actions that have been taken, and we get a booklet that has all the legislation that has been updated, or changed, or addressed, and some of it does affect...
Can you provide some examples?
Not off the top of my head. We've received it, you should have had one last year. It talks about the laws. I don't have that here, and I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Okay, we don't know. Thank you.
And the purpose of the resolutions is to direct the IASB on how to advocate for the school districts and the school boards. And oftentimes, as we know, legislation isn't a direct result of advocacy by the IASB. It's oftentimes advocacy to legislators, who then either take the gauntlet and run with it, or think otherwise, based on additional input that they may have from other sources. But certainly, IASB as an organization and body representing almost every school district board across the state of Illinois, does have an opportunity to advocate on our behalf. But I don't have specific information as to which ones we may have proposed that truly ended in new legislation. So, okay. So, the first one that, there are two very important ones that have been brought up even this evening during public comment. So I'd like to start with those. The first resolution to discuss is Resolution Number Two, which is a Student Safety and Protection Plan. So Resolution Number Two is regarding allowing voluntary district employees, in any capacity, the ability to carry a concealed firearm on district property, provided the employee has a valid FOID card, holds a certified concealed carry license, and has completed additional trainings and certifications as set forth by the respective local school board. So, for that particular resolution, the resolution committee recommends to adopt it. We've heard comments this evening regarding concerns from the public about having members of the staff within a school or a school district carrying firearms in the schools. I'm going to make some comments, and then I'll turn it over to Mrs. Klimkowitz for some comments that she has.
Number Two, that's concealed carry in the classroom, correct?
It's concealed carry on district property.
Isn't 15 gun safes?
Yes, it is.
Okay, you didn't say that. It's different.
We're not talking about 15. We're just talking about two. Yep, just, 15's next. 15's next. Yep, 15 is next. So, I come from a family of educators. My wife is an educator. My daughter is going to be an educator. I've talked with educators in our school district. I've talked with parents in our school district, and myself are very concerned about advocating for, number one, more guns in our schools, and number two, to have our faculty and staff enabled to carry guns. I've heard from teachers, that's not our job. Our job is to educate our students. I've heard that from faculty outside of teachers as well. I think that it's dangerous to introduce more firearms into our buildings and onto our properties. And so for that reason, I am not a supporter of that particular resolution, although the resolution committee is recommending it. Now, what I've heard, and I think Mrs. Klimkowitz is going to talk a little bit about this, is we're a very diverse state, and we have school districts that don't have the resources, don't have the locality of law enforcement to be able to respond to needs within their buildings, should there be one, for someone who is armed, to respond and take care of the situation. And so, that's something that I expect to hear, and I heard about a couple of years ago, when this was brought to the delegate assembly as well, and was not approved at that time. So it's coming back for further consideration.
I know the feelings that have been expressed by members of our community, and I understand those feelings. However, having been at the resolutions committee, I know the passion that the presenters brought forth, and the desire and the need to protect their children also. One of the concerns that they have, Mercer County, it's along the Mississippi, and it's just south of the Quad Cities. It's 378 square miles in area. They have a hard time holding on to the police officers. There's limited state troopers that they have, and limited police. Their biggest concern is that if something were to happen, it could be 20 minutes before a police officer arrives. That is why they're asking for this. They want to be able to take care of their children, to protect those children in the school. I understand the concerns about the guns. They talk about local control. One of the things is really important, because the way the state is, it's just extremely varied of what we have. We are extremely fortunate to have, you know, police officers just minutes away from us, in case something were to happen. They don't have that opportunity. I need to share that with you, because this is important to them. That's what I need to share. I have no idea what's going to happen with this resolution at the convention floor. You're going to have a split, and it's probably going to be debated quite a bit. I am not certain. So I needed to share that, so you understand. They have a concern. They know that guns need to be locked up, it needs to be safe. But they have people that are willing to do that, and they know that it's local control. That's what they're trying to convey to everyone. So that's all I have on that. Thank you.
And the fact, I just want to add to the discussion, the fact that we spend tens of thousands of dollars to belong to this organization to discuss gun control across the state, which, you know, even if this was a law that would provide us with an option, we more than likely would not utilize, is a distraction from the focus of this institution on improving academic performance and preparing our students for career and college readiness. And, you know, honestly, I don't think we should even be spending the money to be part of the IASB and be involved in these debates with these resolutions that distract us from our purpose.
Ken Carr?
Okay, so thank you for your comment on IASB. Are there any other comments on this resolution?
This resolution is a nonstarter to me. I absolutely oppose. I don't think, even if, you know, and I understand, I went to high school in a very, very small town that didn't have an SRO in the building, et cetera. And the thing is, is I think even in this hypothetical scenario, where an armed teacher would somehow provide a measure of safety in a terrible situation, that the immediate increase in everyone, you know, decrease in everyone else's safety day to day is way too high of a cost. So, you know, if the IASB is going to have a position on this one way or the other, I mean, my position is that I'm absolutely opposed.
Are there any other comments on this particular resolution? All right, Mr. McGowan?
No.
Your thoughts?
No.
Okay. Mr. Dombrowski?
I abstain.
Mr. Kramer?
I abstain.
And Mr. Bradley?
No for me.
Thank you. And Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay. All right, thank you. The next one is...
Do you have a, hold yourself?
I say no. I say no. Thank you. The next one is Resolution Number 15. And again, we heard some comments about Resolution Number 15. Resolution Number 15 is around gun storage in the home.
Gun safes?
Blacks.
It's considered child-safe gun storage. So it's regarding gun storage. And the resolution is that school boards support and advocate for legislation strengthening child-safe gun storage laws in the state of Illinois, requiring gun owners to store firearms, whether loaded or unloaded, in a secured, locked container, if a person under the age of 18 is likely to gain access to the weapon without permission. So that's the resolution, and the IASB Resolutions Committee is recommending not to adopt. So as we heard from some public comments this evening, right now, there is legislation already in place that requires such safe storage of firearms, where there's someone under the age of, I think it's under 15?
14.
It's 14 and below, that if there's the possibility that someone 14 or below can gain access to the firearm in the home, that it must be stored in a safe, locked way. And so this resolution is to advocate to increase that age to under the age of 18. We heard some comments tonight regarding statistics, and we've seen statistics... We heard some comments tonight regarding statistics and we've seen statistics as board members regarding the number of young people who have access to guns, use guns, bring guns into our buildings and into our schools, do things with guns that they shouldn't be doing, committing suicide or crimes and the like. And so, this resolution is to increase the age, in my opinion, to better protect our students. And as a Board of Education for high school and in looking at teen suicide, teen crimes, teen shootings, that I think although it's in homes, that it does impact our students. It impacts our community. It impacts our schools. And I think it's very important that although the Resolutions Committee recommends not to adopt, that we do support this resolution for the safety of all involved.
I most definitely agree with that one. Yeah, we need to oppose the do not adopt and encourage that it be raised to age 18.
I agree.
Second.
I agree.
Can you describe what a, what a safe lockbox is?
I think it's the gun lock.
No.
Well, I mean, there's secure storage.
Storage. That's what we're talking about in the resolution. Can you describe what a safely-stored gun is stored in?
Why is she needing to pass some test in order for your, her opinion to have verit-
Why is that? Because, because I wanna talk about it, Mrs. Cavill. Why do you keep cutting me off?
As you keep saying, nobody's cutting you off. I'm pointing out that you say over and over again that you have the right to your opinion. So does she.
So, I ask you a question. What is, what is a safe gun storage?
Let me see if I can answer that. Let me take a look and Mr.-
I can comment on that as well.
Can you do that?
So, in our Resolutions Committee report, some of the things that it identifies is the district rationale for the district that's proposing it, in this case Glen Allen School District 41, as well as the Resolutions Committee rationale as to why they support or oppose the resolution. And some of the, some of the district rationale is around more than half of gun owners store at least one gun unsafely without any locks or other safe storage measures. Nearly a quarter of all gun owners reported storing all of their guns in an unlocked location in the home, while some data suggests that gun owners with children in the home are slightly more likely than other gun owners to store firearms safely. Approximately 4.6 million minors live in homes with loaded, unlocked firearms.
I think if you want some specifics, we can probably get you something a little bit more. I think it's the gun storage locks, whether it's a big safe, whether it's the smaller locks, the locks for the trigger. So, those are some of the safety things.
Well, we're, yeah.
And I don't think we wanna get into specifics. It's a general-
You know, it's gun control, that's worse. The, the, would you consider putting a firearm in a safety deposit, I'm not a safety, a box that has a lock on it, but putting it on the kitchen table?
Okay, I don't think that's-
Okay, thank you.
-what we're really dealing with. I think it's, you know-
We are.
It's the, the ability of the, our lobbyists from the Illinois Association of School Boards to take a look at this and look more at the gun safety and the laws that we currently have. And I don't think we can kind of pick at it right now. If it were to get to that point, maybe there's other things that need to be explored. I'm not the expert on this.
I don't think a person has to have an in-depth knowledge of the various sorts of gun storage containers available on the market, of which there are many, in order to have an opinion on whether you can, whether it's a good idea to raise the age limit from 14 to 18.
And that's basically what we're looking at.
That's all that this is dealing with. The law already exists. So, if you wanna know the specific types of containers that exist, you know, that qualify for this law, you're free to Google that yourself.
Thank you very much.
Madam President, I move to close discussion on this topic.
Thank you, Mr. Dombrowski. So, for resolution number 15, Mr. Bradley? Are you in favor or not in favor-
I'm in favor.
-of the resolution? Mr. Kramer?
No, I'm sorry. Revising my vote. Abstain.
I am in favor. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
The, the, right now, the resolution, the Resolutions Committee is recommending do not adopt. We want to oppose that.
We're voting on the resolution, not the resolution committee's recommendation. I said that at the very beginning. So, I wanna know if you're in support or not in support of the resolution.
I'm not in support of the resolution. Sorry, I misunderstood.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cavill?
No, I'm not, not in support.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Oh, excuse me. Hold on.
Okay.
I apologize. So, we're saying-
Are you in support of raising the age to 18?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
And Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. The next resolution that has, that I've been asked to have for discussion is around cannabis sale, is the resolution and it's resolution number 10. And resolution number 10 is regarding advocating for legislation that would allow 20% of state tax revenues from cannabis sales to go to public education programs that support youth development, violence prevention, and health education. And that they be divided equitably across the state based on the disproportionately impacted area maps that determine the R3 funding. There is a district in Champaign, the Champaign District, that is asking for this. They have a vested interest in ensuring that programming needs are fully funded. So, they're seeking to take some of the money from cannabis sales taxes, which they said have generated more than 175 million in tax revenue, and utilize that at the school district level for, for the betterment of education funds and support for the students. So, the Resolution Committee is recommending yes for that and in support of that resolution. So, Mrs. Klimkowitz, do you have any comment? I'm opening it up for anybody to comment, but I'll start with Mrs. Klimkowitz.
Because I expressed a concern about this. I oppose adopting this because I don't think the, the school boards should be in a, in a position to be encouraging sales so we can get tax money from it. I, that's my personal opinion there. I think the money, the way they have it split up, and I don't have the percentages in front of me, but it goes, you know, to state, it goes to education on drug abuse and cannabis. It goes to a variety of different coffers. So, you would be taking from something else, whether it goes to municipal and state taxes. I, I don't support this for this particular school district that's looking for this. I would oppose adoption of this.
So, we're talking about the sale of legal cannabis and the taxes being allocated to school districts that are more in need than others. Because technically, it's not gonna go to every school district.
That's correct. They're saying take 20% of the taxes that the state is getting from legal cannabis sales and allocate that to schools and then proportion that out based on school need.
And this is the tax money that the state has already taxed the cannabis sales on. So, I'm for it.
And I would ask, keep in mind, they've already got this money divvied up to a variety of different things. And, you know, think about the lottery. How much did education get out of the lottery? So, that's, that's my concern. I really oppose this and I think, you know, it's, it's not the good thing of getting into encouraging more cannabis sales.
I support it.
So, so my thought is a couple of things. One is I don't think asking for money from cannabis taxes is going to encourage more people to use cannabis. But I'm, the only concern that I have is if school districts say, "We wanna cut of that," that the state may say, "Then we're gonna increase tax on cannabis sales." And I also am aware that there, although we're a recreational use-approved state, there are people who use cannabis for medical purposes and, and don't have many options to take care of certain needs that they have from a medical perspective. But it's, again, something to think about. Any other discussions on this particular resolution?
I support this resolution as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Cavill. Mr. Bradley?
I support it.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
I do not support it. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I'm opposed to it.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
And Mr. McGowan?
I support it.
Thank you. Okay. There, there are a couple of resolutions regarding compensation to board members. One of the resolutions was Mrs. Klimkowitz asked to have discussed, discussed and for me to get people's consensus one way or the other on. And that is resolution number four, which is board member childcare.
Point of order, Mr. Rosenbloom, on the last polling, how does that work out? Are you looking for a majority quorum for a pass or for affirmation of it? Did, do you need four votes in order to make a decision or does three?
Simple majority.
You're running this simple majority?
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Yes, I am. This, this resolution is on board member childcare reimbursement. So, there's a couple of resolutions put forth regarding compensating board members for expenses. As we know, board, serving on the Board of Education is a volunteer, unpaid, elected position. And there are some districts, this one was put forth by Champaign again, Champaign District Four, advocating to allow for board members to be reimbursed for childcare costs as a result of participating in board meetings. It is believed that this will remove barriers to increase access and participation of potential board members, which is core to the mission of IASB. The reason that this and the other one were brought, were brought forth were because there are some school districts that people in the community cannot participate as a board member. They can't run, they can't serve because, let's be honest, this takes a lot of time, right? Takes a lot of time, a lot of commitment. We all know there's a ton of emails, there's meetings, there's other commitments that we as board members, meeting with the community, and, and we spend a lot of time doing our board work. And there are some people who, especially because of work obligations or family obligations, are unable to serve on a school board. And so, this particular school district proposed this to allow more parents in the district to take the time without incurring additional expense that they may not be able to afford to take care of their children when they're attending to their board duties. And so, that's what, that's why it was proposed. The Resolution Committee is recommending to adopt it. And, and so, that is the resolution. Mrs. Klimkowitz, do you wanna add anything from your conversations as a Resolution Committee member?
If I may, there were people that did not support it. So, it was not a unanimous with the Resolutions Committee. And I think maybe somewhere along the line that, that should be put in here when there's split votes. I just think it's a slippery slope because we've been against the compensation. I know that, you know, we serve without any kind of compensation in regards to, to being a board member. And I think this opens it up and I do not support this. I'm opposed to adopting this.
Does anybody else have any comments that they would like to make on this?
I know that there's a separate resolution about, by the same school district, I believe, Champaign, that wants to look into compensating board members for their service. And I'm, like Ms. Klimkowitz, opposed to that. But in this specific instance of covering childcare costs so that people who are otherwise not able to participate, you know, I think of my mother who was single for a number of years when I was growing up and, you know, many other people in that position. It precludes them from running for public service. And in, in this instance, I see this less as a compensatory issue, especially because I'm opposed to the compensation resolution as presented. But I see this more of an access issue. And this, I, this I support.
Are there any other comments? Okay, so the, to take a consensus poll, Mr. Bradley?
I'm for it.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
I am not in favor. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I'm opposed.
Mrs. Cavill?
I support.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Opposed.
And Mr. McGowan?
I support.
And I'll run through the, the results when, when we're done. We have two left. One is federal funding for landscaping. That is resolution number 13. And, and this resolution is asking for federal funds to support landscaping within the district. This was submitted by- Champaign again. And it was to provide federal funding to the school districts for landscaping and infrastructure improvements to mitigate, mitigate the effects of environmental problems. They could be rain gardens, pollinator gardens, stormwater detention, trees, flowers, sidewalks, bike paths, a plethora of landscaping items that this school district is asking for federal funds opposed to, in my opinion, local funds to pay for those items. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Again, that was, there were a number of people who did not support this also, asking Congress to come up with money for this. It wasn't exactly meeting the needs of the, the school and the education philosophy. So, I would, I would oppose this legislation or this resolution.
I oppose it for the same reasons.
I wanna go back to something Mr. Dombrowski said, and that is the ISB's, and I understand that it's, it's based on school district submissions, right? And not the ISB pulling up these thoughts and resolutions on their own. But it's based on recommendations from school districts in our state that are asking them to consider these things. And then it gets put forth and gets coming to the delegate assembly next weekend. So, so my concern is we need to be concentrating on, on things related to educating our students as, as a member of IASB. And that to request the federal government to help landscape a, a school district or a, or a school area, I think is far-reaching and not something I support. So, any other comments before I poll those who haven't made their comments one way or another? All right, Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstain.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstain.
And Mr. McGowan?
Anytime the government touches anything, it gets that much more expensive. So, I'm opposed.
Okay. All right, thank you. And the last one is Remote Virtual School Board Open Meetings Resolution Number Five. So, this resolution is to allow school boards and committees of school boards, subject to the Open Meetings Act, to allow open or closed meetings to be conducted via audio or video conference without the physical- or video conference without the physical presence of a quorum of the members, so long as provisions are included addressing verification of members being present with full access and participation in the meeting, providing that public members attending in person at the location can observe all votes and discussion of the body, providing certain personnel are present at the posted meeting location, addressing the process for how votes are conducted to guarantee identification and proper recording, providing appropriate notice to news media and public regarding time, location, methods of participation, providing appropriate records and record, and recording of meetings, and provide to the public, and are provided to the public, and to remove restricted remote participation to only times of personal illness, disability, employment purposes, or family emergency. So the way it is right now, my understanding, is that someone could dial in, so to speak, right, if they have a personal illness, disability, employment purpose, or family emergency. So this resolution is to remove that and allow school board members to be virtual regardless of reason. And their presence from a virtual perspective would still fall under the Open Meetings Act and could count as a quorum if there are enough doing that. Mrs. Klimkowitz, from your conversations?
Again, that was, there were several no votes in regards to this. I think it makes a difference when people are together, we can communicate better, we can see each other. You can, body language says a lot also, so I think that those are important things. And if you've got people that choose to meet virtually, I don't know if they'd be fully And I think one of the duties of the board members is to be present with one another because it makes a difference in the interactions with people. So I am, my feeling is I'm opposed to this resolution.
So, understanding that we're in a new world, we learned a lot over the last couple of years with regards to being remote and being virtual, and certainly I think we have greater capabilities now than maybe we did a couple of years ago. But I also feel that it's important that if someone is committing to be a member of the Board of Education, that there are certain things that go along with it, including a commitment to come to meetings. I think removing those caveats of family emergency, employment, health, or I think it was disability, that would otherwise prevent someone, it's personal illness, disability, employment, or family emergency that could prevent someone from attending. To remove, to remove, to remove limiting someone's not attending a board meeting in person because of those reasons is not conducive to our getting together, as Mrs. Klimkowitz said, looking each other in the eyes, meeting across the table with our constituents. And I think it's part of the commitment that we make to our community in serving on this board, is that we'll be available and accessible. And so I'm not in favor of this particular resolution. Does anybody else have any comments that they'd like to make regarding it?
I'm not in favor.
Okay. Mr. Bradley?
Not in favor.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstaining.
And Mr. McGowan?
Not in favor.
Okay. So...
Guys, I know that you wanted to end, I do have one that I wanted to talk about.
Sure.
And that is, I'm sure people won't be surprised, Number Nine, Health and Sex Education Curriculum. So this resolution submitted by Mercer County advocates, what it says it does, be it resolved that the Illinois Association of School Boards shall support and advocate for local school district control of content and curriculum for health and sex education courses offered in their districts. And what's interesting is that, that as it's written, I support. However, when you look into the rationale for proposing such a thing, is that, the law that has passed recently, 818, which we haven't had a discussion about, doesn't mandate a particular curriculum like, for example, Number Eight does, which is the Science of Reading Curriculum by Waukegan, which says all districts have to use this one curriculum. The bill puts in place new standards for different grade levels, and then it changes already existing standards essentially, because we've had sex education standards in this state. Those aren't new. It changes those in many of the grades. And so, and it's also an opt-in, opt-out. So essentially, you know, you either teach sex education that meets the new standards, or you can choose not to teach sex education. It is not yet mandated, you have to teach this curriculum as this is presented. So I do think that local control of curriculum and community input is really important. You know, when I was teaching, a big part of the work would be doing the background work and seeing what people in that community and that particular school are comfortable with, what they're not, doing the homework to make sure, because, you know, it's a customer service position, you want to make sure everybody's happy. But what I don't like the idea of is having a resolution that essentially allows districts to either go on teaching or teach poorer sex education, which is worse than nothing at all. So, you know, medically inaccurate education, outdated information, et cetera, which is, I think, the effect of what this resolution is. So it's complicated. You know, for me, I do think local control is really important. I just also think that this resolution, as it's written, is misconstruing the law as it was passed. Now, if the state eventually changes that to a mandate, saying like, here, these are the standards, this is the curriculum, we expect every district in the state to teach this, I would oppose such a thing. I don't think that that is, I don't think that that's appropriate, but that's not what this resolution is saying. So the recommended action is to adopt. I oppose adopting this. On Number Nine.
So for those that aren't familiar or looked at this earlier, it's that the ISB supports and advocates for local school district control of content and curriculum for health and sex ed courses offered in their districts. It also says that it's in response to SB 818 that passed, both the House and Senate, and that there's concern that, right now, the SB 818 says a school district may, rather than shall, use the new curriculum. There's concerns that the state legislature can change this to shall at any time without local district input, as has been seen in the past. So they're advocating for continued local control, to Ms. Cavill's point, over the sex ed curriculum and not have it mandated at the state level.
Yeah, I don't agree with mandating at the state level, but I do agree with standards. And that's what, that's what the bill does. So that's my issue. That's what the bill does. And so if their current curriculum that they're happy with no longer meets the new standards, they don't want to change. But in that, that's where I would have the issue. I support the new standards. And so, you know, I think if you're going to teach sex education, you should meet the new standards. If you choose not to do that, you believe it's not appropriate for your grade levels or your district, I also support the decision absolutely to opt out. What I don't support is teaching an outdated curriculum, which to me is the effect of this resolution, is to go on teaching a curriculum that no longer meets state standards. I don't agree with that.
I'm going to ask a question, and maybe Dr. Small can answer it. When state standards are updated, how does that affect the school then? What do they have to do to be able to follow it? Do they review their curriculum? What happens at that point? Maybe that'll help with some clarification, if you wouldn't mind, please.
So if it's a requirement, what happens in terms of the accountability of the school district is when we are audited by the state and our local regional office of education, we have to show the requirement and how we're meeting the requirement. In terms of the process of when new standards come through, that's part of the curriculum process, where they would look at our critical learning standards, and most of the time we already meet them, because we don't necessarily, settle is the wrong word, but I'm going to say it right now, at 10:10 at night, settle at what's simply at that state standard. We also look at the professional and national standards. We also look at our local industries in terms of what should be added to it. So we don't go just based on that one component. It is included if it is required, but we don't make that restrictive.
Okay. So every superintendent should be evaluating it that way, we would hope?
Well, if it's required, it's put forth, I mean, it's part of our audit.
Okay. So they all need to be doing that. And I think that was part of Ms. Cavill's concern, is, you know, if they're state standards, what do they need to maybe update their curriculum? And I think that's part of the concern here, and, excuse me, they wanted to make sure that it says "may" instead of "shall." So, thank you.
And to Ms. Cavill's concern, she wants to make sure that there's standards
Yes.
that the school districts have to follow.
And I would like that to stay "may" rather than "shall."
Okay.
So should that happen in the future, I'll happily join the fight, not for that to be appropriate. It's not appropriate.
Any other?
Yeah, I think there's some confusion. We won't know until it's rolled out here in District 211. My understanding is that the legislation passed by the House and the Senate with a lot of abstentions there because it's controversial and signed by the governor, is that you have a choice. You follow the standards, or you don't teach at all. That is what my understanding is. And so it's an all or nothing, and I think that we're going to have to make that decision probably in the spring or early summer of next year, when, because it's mandated to be in effect in, I think, 2023.
Any other comments? Mr. Bradley?
I'm in agreement with Ms. Cavill.
Okay. Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
I'm in favor of the resolution. Mrs. Klimkowitz?
In favor of the resolution.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I'm abstaining.
And Mr. McGowan?
Not in favor.
Okay. All right.
For indulging me, I know it's getting late in the evening.
I think we have one more quick one.
Actually, we have two more. I don't know how quick. One is Resolution Number Twelve, which is around electric school buses and charging stations. Again, we heard a public comment about this, this particular resolution, from someone in our audience this evening, and it's having the ISB urge the Congress of the United States to provide federal funding to school districts for clean electric school buses and charging stations. So the resolution committee is recommending to adopt, to not adopt this resolution. So my thought, first of all, I'm all for the most energy-efficient, environmentally-friendly, clean, and current transportation for our students. Safe, and, you know, reasonable from an expense perspective regarding the actual equipment and maintenance and so forth. We have, I don't know for how many years now, four years maybe, been converting to propane, right? Is it four years? Am I right?
I believe so, yes. Four, five years, yep.
Okay. When we, as a school board, passed the conversion of our transportation to propane, I remember I was a pretty vocal advocate for that at the time, and I think we've been doing a very good job of converting to that. My concern, I'm also not a supporter of this particular resolution, my concern is a couple of things. One is to have the cost of the infrastructure associated. We heard from one of our constituents tonight talk about the 125 miles, I think it was, that a bus can go. I don't know statistically how far our buses go on a daily basis, and to be able to charge. And I know electric vehicles, cars and such, not only have been in the news from a stock perspective the last couple of days, but are up and coming. And there's legislation and recommendations to go more electric in consumer vehicles and the like. But I think that to have the right infrastructure for our school district, I'm thinking from a 211 perspective, this was submitted by Champagne again, I think it would cost us a lot of money to put in charging stations and to have the electric school buses, and I understand that it's to provide federal funding, but we, it doesn't say that the federal funding would cover 100% of the new buses or the charging stations and the cost to our district to make those conversions. So I'm not in favor of this particular resolution, because I think we're already making some headway with regards to our revised buses and use of propane.
I would support this if it was advocating for the state government for the disbursement of theoretical infrastructure funds that were just passed, but I don't, because it's, again, advocating to Congress, you know, it's a waste of time, so no.
And I think this resolution did not look at any other types of clean burning fuel. And I know we're using the propane buses, and I think they've been better environmentally than the diesel that we had, and they've been working for us, and sustainable. So that was one of the reasons why it was "do not adopt."
Mr. Bradley?
No.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I support the resolution of "do not adopt."
Mr. Dombrowski?
Abstaining.
And Mr. McGowan?
No.
Okay. And the last one I wanted to talk about is Resolution Number One. Resolution Number One talks about pre-service teacher education and licensure in literacy. What this resolution is, is requiring new teachers to teach in our state, to have completed at least one undergraduate-level literacy education course solely dedicated to scientifically-proven methods of reading. Before being granted a license, individuals must receive a passing score on the most recent published Foundation of Reading exam using PUT scores. They include early education, early childhood education, early childhood special ed, elementary ed, English language arts, middle-grade language arts, reading specialists, reading teachers, special ed, speech-language pathologists, and English language learner teachers, or ELL. The issue I have with this is this is advocating for the state of Illinois to require certain education by individuals who are then going to teach in Illinois, but it's for new educators, so pre-service teachers. The question, so I attended a webinar on the resolutions, actually two of them, and I asked the question, what about teachers who are being educated in another state, right? Maybe they're going to school in California, or Indiana, or somewhere else, Michigan, and then they're going to, and there's reciprocity. So if you get certified to teach in a neighboring state, some of those have reciprocity with teaching here in Illinois. Or if you're transferring from a state that has reciprocity with Illinois, this resolution does not require those people to meet the same minimum requirements of licensure as we're requiring people who are in Illinois. So I asked the question, I said... So I asked the question, I said, what about those teachers who are coming from somewhere else? And they said, hey, we can only control what we do here in the state of Illinois. I have a problem with that, right? Because there are some awesome educators that are coming to us from outside of Illinois. And to say, in Illinois, we have a different standard than people coming from elsewhere, I have an issue with. And I, so for that reason, although the resolution committee is recommending to adopt that, I think because it only focuses on educators who are learning in the state of Illinois, that I don't support the adoption of this.
And I know there was discussion in regards to that. And possibly that can be something that can be looked at. Maybe someone can take an exam. But I think the crux of this was to better prepare our teachers to teach literacy. Because if you take a look at some of the scores, we're not doing so well in some areas. And if this helps the teacher and it helps prepare the teacher within our state of Illinois and we hire them, you know, in our schools, then I think that there's a lot of value. And maybe that's something that can be worked out as far as teachers coming from another state.
Any other comments? Mr. Bradley?
I'm for it.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
I support it.
Mrs. Cavill?
I support it.
Mr. Dombrowski?
I'm abstaining.
And Mr. McGowan?
I support it.
Okay, so I'll run through real quick the results. So for cannabis sales, this school board is in support of the resolution. For board member childcare, this board is not in favor of the resolution. For federal funding for landscaping, this board is not in favor of the resolution. For gun safe, child, sorry, child-safe gun storage, this board is in favor. That's Resolution 15. For remote virtual school board open meetings, this board is not in favor. For student safety and protection plan, which is the ability to have people carry firearms, this school district board is not in favor of that resolution. For school buses, this school, this, ah, this school board is not in favor. For sex and health ed, this school board is not in favor. And I think, is that it?
No, I thought that we were in favor for the health and sex ed curriculum. It was to adapt. I thought we were in favor of it.
We are, I got that we're not in favor. Mr. Bradley said no.
So the resolution, again...
We're not in favor of the resolution.
The resolution is to adapt it.
We're not in favor of the resolution, according to the votes. We're not in favor of the resolution.
Okay.
Correct. So thank you all very much.
All right. Mr. Rosenblum, thank you very much for preparing for this and for leading the discussion of this. And thank you, board members, for participating in that. I think it's really important, so thank you for taking the time to do that. Our next item is new business, and it's the waiver of the school code driver's ed. The recommended motion is that, the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the application for waiver or modification of school board rules and/or school code mandates to charge up to $400 for the behind-the-wheel portion of driver education as presented and direct the superintendent to submit the application to the Illinois State Board of Education as detailed in the application instructions. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Okay, if there's no discussion, then roll call.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
No.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz? Aye.
The next item is the revised school calendar. The recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the revised school calendars for the 2022-2023 school year, summer 2022, summer 2023, and summer 2024 as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great, discussion. Dr. Small, did you want to talk about this a little, or?
The five years of calendars were presented in February of 2019 to facilitate the planning for our families and our staff. The two new public acts, including the celebration of the Juneteenth National Freedom Day and the modification of November 8th, 2022, as the general election day as a state holiday, prompts the revisions of these calendars typically by one day.
Any discussion questions? Okay, if there is none, then roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is the Fall Curriculum Committee Report. The recommended action is that the Curriculum Committee Report and recommendations be approved as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Great, discussion.
Yeah, I think that we're going to have to think about this because part of the Curriculum Committee Report deals with IIAA and I, I, what, INB. So that has been postponed.
Sure, so that part of the report simply states that we discuss these at each of the Curriculum Committee meetings so that each of the department chairs and leadership within our district was aware of the policy and that they were aware of the guidelines. And we could ensure that everyone across the district and each department understood.
Are you going to make them aware that it's still undecided for those two policies?
Until those new policies come into effect, the old policy stands, right? So there's a policy in play regardless.
Right, we follow the current policy.
Right, I think that should be stated, what the current state of the policies are.
And I believe that's what was shared with, for the Curriculum Committee Report also. The Curriculum Committee is made aware of it and it's presented to them and making certain that the chair people share all that information with their respective departments.
I don't see what the policy that details the process for, you know, objections or complaints has to do with this.
Well, it's right here.
Mr. Kramer, are you recommending that the educators in our school district are aware that the current policy is being reviewed?
Yes.
All of our policies get reviewed, so I'm not certain where we're going with this.
Well, this was kind of a big topic here today.
Correct.
I think that the faculty needs to be aware that there is some concern about the policy that was presented by the Curriculum Committee. I'm sorry, yeah, the Curriculum Committee.
But the specific objections were about the complaint process, not...
Right.
This cover...
Whatever, whatever, the report's a report.
The report covers a number of topics, books, and activities that they're doing within those departments.
Right, I agree. Just that section is a little OBE right now.
Thank you. A question, we have the, I believe it's the English Language Arts Group that has deferred until the spring, is that correct? In order to get more time to address equity and diversity in their material?
What specifically do you see them deferring?
I didn't see any recommendation from that group. I may have missed something, but it just, it sounded like they had a discussion and couldn't settle and then moved on and deferred it to the spring. Is that correct?
Which one are you, what page, what?
Yeah, we're looking at page five.
Okay.
And then the material that's typically like software-related?
Well, it doesn't say that they deferred anything.
It says nothing about the spring. It says nothing about deferred. So I'm not sure what you're talking about within English.
One of the projects was connected to Priority 1 of the Equitable Curriculum Instruction Section of the District Equity Plan.
Right. If I could just clarify some of this, actually.
Yeah.
There's been some comments at past board meetings that there's not enough material presented regarding the curriculum and the curriculum meetings. So within this report, I'm trying to respond and present more information about what the discussions are. What we're doing right now as a board, or what you are doing as a board, is voting on the approvals that were there. The rest of it is simply informational for you.
Right, and so I was just asking, because I know part of our policy on the curriculum is that the material's available for review. And with some of that material that may be forthcoming in future curriculum materials, is there a notice that we can get for that review? I know we received this report right before the weekend, so we have some opportunity. But if we have a question about some of the software, do we have access to that to review it?
Sure, if you ever have a question on anything, we can always provide more information.
But we can physically come into the admin center and look at the material?
Absolutely.
I believe that's the policy, okay.
The software, we would have to figure out whether we have a license for you to see it or you might have to do some research.
Right, that's why I'm asking if it's feasible.
But the textbooks, we would have in advance because it goes through multiple review processes here before it comes to the board.
Right, okay, so...
And they have always been available to the board historically.
Right, and so is it possible to get more than maybe a week's notice to see some of that? For, you know, forthcoming?
Yes.
Okay.
How much time do you need?
Two weeks would be fine. It's just hard to adjust the schedule from Monday to Thursday sometimes.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, may I have a roll call, please?
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. The next item is the senior graduation products. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize the superintendent or designate to execute a contract with Justin's, Inc. for the purchase of senior graduation products for all of the schools for the 2021-22, 2022-2023, and 2023-2024 school year. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Why multiple years? Why not just one year at a time?
Dr. Small?
It just provides us with continuity of service and without having to go through for products that are used one time for the year. It just allows us the opportunity to enter into a multi-year agreement. It also incentivizes the vendors to provide potentially more competitive pricing when they know that they have a multi-year agreement that they are providing proposals on.
It is cost-sharing between the district and the students, i.e. their parents, correct? To buy the stuff?
Some of the items are student purchase, some are a fee, and others are district-provided.
What's the total annual cost of the contract?
Well, the information here is that there is $13,000 that the district will pay for the price of diplomas and diploma covers each year. We've allocated $21,000 in the budget to cover waived fees for the cap and gown and the purchase for the other items, including the graduation announcements. There is not an annual cost associated with it because that is a student purchase.
There's not an annual cost, pardon me?
Those are student-purchased items. So that is something that if a student has interest in providing, or in purchasing any of the paper announcement options that are available for graduation, that they may do so, that's a service and product that's available to our families.
But students pay for the cap and gown unless it's waived for low income. Is that correct?
Yes.
So is that include, is that cost that the students pay? Is that included as part of the total value of the contract? And what are we contracting for?
For the cost of purchasing the cap and gown.
Including the students who purchased it?
The, what is provided in the proposal is the fee by which the company will charge us to purchase a cap and gown. Then we pass that fee through to the family.
And so what's the total cost of that, of the whole contract? On an annual basis?
It depends on the number of graduates that we have and...
I'll park it.
$22,000 times 3,000... I have to look at the number of the, or the packages, but it's $22 to $35 for the cap and gown. I just want to bring out the exact pricing so that I'm... But the district's cost is, I'm sorry.
Mr. Kramer, is it possible that we can get these numbers at a later time?
Voting on this tonight.
I understand that.
No.
But if there's questions, it's always helpful to, you know, submit the question ahead of time. And then that makes it a little bit easier to have the information on hand.
Just on me now. So do you want, should I move to postpone the vote on this?
No.
Lauren, do you have information there?
I do. So if we have roughly, I'm just trying to find the number of students that are waived here. So it's roughly 3,000 students times the $22, and we are waiving $21,000 of that. So $40,000 we're assessing.
So it's $40,000 is the annual cost?
No, that is the $60,000. $20,000 the board is funding, $40,000 we're collecting in fees.
Okay, I don't understand. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion?
Just a question, how long have we been using their services? Because I recall in 90s, we were using it as well.
They have been our successful vendor. I can't tell you the exact number of years, but we have certainly used them for some time.
Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? If not, roll call, please.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Ms. Cavill?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Abstaining.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye. All right, that leads us to our next item, potential topics for future discussion. Okay, if there are none, then our committee reports. And it's the NSSEO, and I will try to be very brief with it. One of the main items of discussion for the NSSEO was the shortage of staff. Right now, Kirk School is only accepting member district students. They're not able to accept districts, or students from outside of our district. They're very short of staff, short of four licensed staff and 15 non-licensed staffed. And it's really important to be able to have those people there because of the severe and profound needs of our students at Kirk. The discussion centered around what kind of incentives can be offered to recruit people. I know all school districts are having that difficulty. So they're offering some referral incentives and some sign-on bonuses to get people into the district and to fill these open positions. The funding that's being used is what, the monies that are available right now from the unfilled positions. So right now, that is, that is the most crucial of getting the people that they need. The other item that was discussed, the Financial Advisory Committee is going to start getting organized, and they'll be meeting in January. They help establish what the budget will be and what the cost will be to our member districts. So that's it for NSSEO, thank you. The next is Ed Redd and Mr. Rosenblum?
Thank you. So Ed Redd had a meeting last week, which... So EdRed had a meeting last week, which I attended. A couple things before I get to some of the content of that meeting. The next meeting is December 3rd, and they just announced a save the date for legislative dinner coming up. In the meantime, some of the items that were discussed during the, the EdRed meeting last week include just notification that there's a big lawsuit going on across our state with, with several school districts around masks and quarantining, which we are a part of. There were discussions around TRS savings plan and that there are still several unresolved issues about it, including liability protection for districts, role of the district, expenses to administer, who can amend, and who will monitor changes to it. They let us know that Faith's Law passed the House and Senate, and that is around grooming. And there was a brief update that COVID-19 administrative leave bill is in effect through executive order. That is my update on EdRed.
Thank you. Next is the Booster Club report, Mr. Kramer?
Yes, thank you. Two weeks ago, three, how time flies. There was a meeting organized by Holmes, I think, of, of all the, the presidents of the Booster Clubs. It was, it was a learning experience for me. My impression is that the Booster Clubs are live, active, focused, well-run, and they're going to raise a lot of money. It's a great group.
Okay, thank you very much. Next is community and family service report, Mr. Dombrowski, or Mr. McGowan?
There were two virtual meetings. The group in Hoffman Estates exchanged activities that were going on. That was pretty much the focus of the, the discussion. And then the group in Palatine are creating a community hub of resources around social services and networking, and I think the Palatine Village President is, is very eager to see that in place to kind of help with some of the resource sharing as far as needs go within the community. So it was, the Palatine meeting was very productive.
Okay. All right, Mr. Gugan? All right, thank you very much. And then there's the Illinois Association of School Board reports.
Just when you thought you didn't have enough about IASB. So, so first of all, the triple I conference is coming up a week from tomorrow. It kicks off downtown, a lot of great learnings, networkings, et cetera. And the ISB issued its federal legislative report just the other day, and some items that were mentioned on there is that the U.S. House passed the infrastructure program, which now I guess has passed everybody, so, so that's information. Also, there's new congressional maps for the state of Illinois based on the 2020 census. So I know there are some changes, some overlapping and, and district changes and things like that as a result. And finally, that President Biden signed a K through 12 Cybersecurity Act of 2021. The U.S. Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency is now being tasked to study cybersecurity risks facing elementary and secondary schools and develop recommendations, including toolkits designed for school officials to use to face these threats. The goal is to help school districts to keep online information systems secure and protect sensitive student and employee records. So I'm very hopeful that it does what it's supposed to do and, and helps us as a school district going forward. So that is my ISB update.
Thank you very much.
And, I'm sorry, and once again, I want to thank every, all the board members and those who have been attending the meeting from the public for your time and, and putting up with going through all those resolutions. Thank you.
Thank you. Then we have the upcoming events and calendar items. The next item is the closed session. The recommended action is that the board enter closed session to discuss minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, probable or imminent litigation against affecting or on behalf of the public body, appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees, matter pertaining to an individual student, and collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees or their representatives. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Ms. Cavell?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs., Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The announcement is that the board returned to open session, and it is 11:50. And may I have a roll call, please?
I second that motion to return to open session?
I need a first.
So moved.
Second.
We got the second, all right, thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Bradley?
Here.
Mrs. Cav...
Point of order, I hear does, does not count as a yes vote, correct?
It's a roll call.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Cavell, aye. Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
We have some retirement requests, excuse me, workers' compensation settlement. The recommended motion, recommended action is that the Board of Education authorize settlement in the pending workers' compensation matter as presented. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavell, aye. Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next recommended action is that the Board of Education accepts the retirement requests of Mary O'Donnell effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff, Martha Owens effective May 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 Union Support Staff, Todd Romanowski, previously approved by the Board of Education on July 15th, 2021, effective November 2021, instead of June 2023, according to the master contract of the District 211 Operations Maintenance Group, and Linda Split effective June 2022, according to the master contract of the District 211 United Support Staff. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavell, aye. Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
The next item...
Point of order, I think someone has to say whether or not the motion carried, either the recording secretary or the board president.
The motion carries. The next item is that the employee Jerry Song, the recommended action is that the employee Jerry Song be suspended for 10 days without pay, that the Board of Education adopt a resolution authorizing notice to remedy for Jerry Song, and that such notice be provided to the employee by the Secretary of the Board of Education. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Mr. Bradley?
Aye.
Mr. Kramer?
Aye.
Mr. McGowan?
Aye.
Mrs. Cavell, aye. Mr. Rosenblum?
Aye.
Mr. Dombrowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Klimkowitz?
Aye.
And the motion carries. Okay, and if there's no other business to come before the board, then the board president declares the meeting of the Board of Education adjourned.